Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 19th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. I'm Mayor Debbie Burtland. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Good evening. Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wiesentiner. And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Great, we have a full house. So our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. It's actually more detailed agenda. The subject hasn't changed, the order hasn't changed, the revision just elaborates in terms of how the study session will operate. In other words, there'll be the opportunity for public input during the study session. And then during councilmember reports, we will have a more in-depth discussion than usual on the King County Parks Levy. So that was the only change to the agenda.
Okay. Would it be possible to just get a printout of that before? Not right, or if you've, I don't need it right now, but before we get to the regular meeting, I'll just grab a copy.
Okay, super. So the City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 4231101I for approximately 30 minutes. The council's not expected to take final action after this executive session. I think we're just waiting for the technical setup to be complete. Are we ready to go? Okay, super. So hello and welcome back to the March 19th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. We have just completed an executive session and will now move on to our study session, which is Agenda Bill 5540, East Link Construction and Mercer Island Interchange Study Updates. So just the way this is gonna roll, it's a little bit different than some of our study sessions. We're going to start with a 30-minute staff presentation, and that's in order to lay, you know, provide the public, the council, and everybody a lay of the land. We will then follow with a 30-minute period for public appearances. So people who wish to ask questions, we're gonna limit the time to two minutes, so two minutes rather than three minutes, and go through as many questions as we can, but we are gonna have to cap it at 30. And then we'll have 30 minutes for additional council questions. Now, for those of you who don't have your questions answered during that first 30-minute period, you can always submit them on Let's Talk, any number of ways. You can also stay for the general public appearances, which will happen when we start our regular meeting. So that's what's gonna happen. We'll have 30, 30, and 30. So in other words, we probably won't finish here until 7:10. But with that, I'd certainly like to welcome our King County Metro and our Sound Transit partners, and gonna turn it over to you for some introductions and welcome. Kirsten, are you master of ceremonies?
Mm.
Julie.
Okay. Mayor and council, good evening. Julie Underwood, your city manager. Just wanted to provide some context. You, many of the council members recall, in June of 2017, the council adopted, approved some agreement terms to settle the litigation that we had with Sound Transit and WashDOT. The city and Sound Transit formally adopted the settlement agreement later that year, October and November 2017. And then really, we started working very closely with Sound Transit and Metro to examine, okay, based on the agreement, what would be the operational impacts to Metro, knowing full well that when we adopted those terms, Metro is not a party to that agreement. Metro would have to examine and evaluate how the agreement might impact their operations once we have light rail. And in fact, that's what we embarked on. So we worked very closely with them to study that. And what you have before you is actually that report, their findings. And so this evening is really designed for us, well, for our really technical experts at Metro and Sound Transit to provide that overview for you. Obviously, this is the first time our community's having a chance to review it. So we have also installed a Let's Talk page for soliciting questions and feedback from our community. So that's also kicked off, I believe, last week. So really, this is designed for you to receive information, I think, ask clarifying questions, seek additional input, but really, no intention to seek any direction this evening. Again, just for you to receive the information. So with that as context, I'll turn it over. Jemay or Kirsten? Thank you, Kirsten.
All right. Thank you. Kirsten Taylor, Senior Project Manager. And I would like to introduce the staff who will be presenting to you and answering your questions this evening. We have Mike Bell, who is the Executive Project Director for East Link, and Luke Lemond, who is Sound Transit Government and Community Relations, and Jemay Hoffman, East Link Light Rail Development Manager. And then from King County Metro, we have Katie Chalmers, your Service Planning Supervisor. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Bell, who's going to start out with an East Link Construction update.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. It's been some time since we've been before you, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about our construction progress. We are active on all 14 miles of our project. I'm gonna give you some highlights of that, but I understand that the real intent of the conversation tonight is around the interchange. So I'm gonna be fairly expeditious in the review of our active work. As I mentioned, East Link is 14 miles long. We have 10 stations and two garages that are currently under construction. We have a fairly heavy footprint everywhere you go on the east side. You get a sense of our presence, and we have a very visible presence in many parts like South Bellevue, certainly on the Floating Bridge, and other parts of downtown Bellevue where our vertical elements are emerging out of the ground. The last few months have been kind of an exciting time in our project because we've started completing some of our early infrastructure work, our utilities, and we're actually working on our stations now, the place where our customers interface with our facilities. So we're starting to work on those architectural elements, and it's one of those things that we find very exciting. Just some information up there on our program and what we're doing, some, just some nice metrics in there, statistics that we like to throw in regarding ride times for our facilities here. And then those are all references to Mercer Island Station. The, this little graphic here is illustrative of our different construction contracts that we currently have underway. We have six civil contracts. Those are our contracts where we actually build kind of the concrete and utilities. And then we have a systems contract. And those systems contracts come in, and they eclipse all of the other civil contracts. They come in and they build the overhead electrical cantonary system and all the signals that operate our vehicles. The important thing with the schedule here is, I just want to point out that, there we are in the middle of 2019. We are approaching our 50% milestone on our construction schedule. So in typical Sound Transit fashion, we're gonna have a little party. No, we're just kidding. We're not gonna have a party. But we are, but we are happy. We're on schedule and we're on budget. Just starting out at the east end of our project, this is the Redmond Technology Station. This is what, this was recently renamed. This was previously the Overlake Transit Center. You can see the picture on the right side of the image there. That's our at-grade station there, and it has a really unique interface with our parking garage there that has the transit loop actually coming through, through the basement level. So that's the parking garage, and then at the grade level, that's where, that's where the buses will come through to create kind of that multimodal connection. This is some of the, threw in some of our virtual models for some of the, for some of these stations, and that's what that final product will look like. That's right out at Northeast 40th, real close to Microsoft Campus. And then moving closer to us, this is at, this is at Overlake Village. This is in the vicinity of around 148th. And this is our station there. Similarly, you can see that at-grade station there, and then you can see the elevated work that's, that's leading into it. These are pretty visible elements as you're, as you're driving along 520. And again, it's another at-grade station, so you can see how that looks when you're, when it's, when it's at completion. These stations often have fairly humble beginnings. You know, right now in the Bell Red corridor, it's, we, it's, it's all at-grade, and it's very, it's very old with a, I guess, a storied kind of industrial history out there. So there's lots of utilities, lots of old stuff in the ground that we've had to navigate, move, and relocate. So that is our future station site, as humble as it looks. And that's what it'll look like someday. Some of the imagery in the back is, is a kind of some TOD or some transit-oriented development concepts that we're currently advancing with the city of Bellevue. And then speaking of transit-oriented development, this is one of the larger developments in the Bell Red area. This is out of Spring District where Wright Runstead is developing the property. Very exciting place to be. There's, we are, unlike a lot of our other projects or work locations, this is an area where we're just a very small part of it. We're just building this trench right through the middle of their site. And our station here will actually be kind of underground, kind of a retained cut station. And that'll, that's what, that'll feel like when you're down there. Moving closer towards us and into downtown Bellevue, this is now, it's our Wilburton Station. We used to call this the hospital station. I usually refer to it as the pump house station, because that's my favorite place to go on in Bellevue. But the, you can see some of our infrastructure developing there, supporting future stair towers, ancillary buildings and the like. And again, there's, that station there is elevated. And then moving into downtown Bellevue, this is a, this is a really, I think, a real success story for our team here and how we've successfully coordinated with the city of Bellevue. This was really kind of the nexus of East Link. Very, lots of utilities. This is the location where our tunnel on 112th surfaces. It's right in front of City Hall. It runs down Northeast State and right to where our future station is going to be. Lots of coordination, lots of traffic, and a very dense commercial environment there. Moving into South Bellevue, scenario image of our station there. You see how the, the yellow is, is really a yellow image that's kind of running from left to right is some of the formwork that's being utilized to form that bridge deck. You see how it kind of separates to form that center platform that's above, above grade there. And then the, and then the white area and kind of the footprint on the, on the bottom side of the picture is the footprint for our new 1,500-car garage. And then there's a picture of that. Moving on to Mercer Island, here's our, there's some of our station images that I'm sure everyone's familiar with. The work is proceeding very well. The noise walls that you see down there, those are really designed to prevent the wheel noise from, not our trains, but the wheel noise from the freeway, to create a more pleasant environment on the, on the center platform down there. Here's a, here's a picture down at the at-grade location. This is a center platform. Some of our stations have, have side platforms where we're unable to create a gap with the tracks. Our preferred solution, design solution with our stations is always to have a center platform. So there's less confusion in terms of pedestrian movements going up and down to that platform. And so you can actually see there in the distance, some of the stair towers coming down in that center area where those utilities and conduits are being constructed. That'll actually be kind of the passenger waiting area there. And then finally, moving over to Judkins Park, our last station before our connection into our existing line over at International District Station. This was a picture right after demolition work that occurred there from the old pedestrian structure. And then finally, a nice image of, of what that station will look like at the end. We're, we're really starting to focus in on our, on our stations. You know, like I said, that those are the places where our, our customers interface with our facilities. So our presentations in the past, as I've been before, various council, various councils have often focused on some of the, some of the roadway work, some of the horizontal work. But we're really excited now that we're at a chance where we, we're at a time in our project where we can actually start to talk about our stations. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over, actually, I understand, city, Mercer Island.
Jemay. So I think we're just, are we, Kirsten, are we gonna go through Sound Transit and then give King County Metro the chance to talk? Is that the sequencing?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So we've coordinated. So Katie and I are gonna present together what the transit configuration looks like and how it will work. And my understanding is that, Kirsten, you actually wanted to start us off?
You actually wanted to start us off with the progress we've made to date, working together to implement the settlement agreement. And this is one of the next steps in doing that. All right. The, the city of Mercer Island and Sound Transit signed a settlement agreement, a legal agreement in 2017. And we have made a lot of progress implementing the settlement agreement for the East Link project. We've implemented two pilot projects for Last Mile Solutions, a rideshare with Uber and Lyft that had over 900 participants taking almost 6,000 rides, and then a bike share pilot project with Lime that was very popular. Sound Transit has implemented bike and sidewalk improvements at the Mercer Island Park and Ride, which this picture shows a selection of those improvements. Sound Transit contributed to the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan, and we are working on the developing commuter parking and mixed-use development at the Tully site. We also have worked with Sound Transit, Metro, on the, on implementing the bus rail integration on Mercer Island, which is Section 4 of the settlement agreement.
And so that's what we're here to focus on today and describe what we've been working on together over the years and what we're proposing to implement. So as Mike has just described, Sound Transit's bringing light rail to Mercer Island, but that's only part of the story, in that we want to make sure there's seamless connections from light rail to transit, to rideshare, to our Last Mile Solutions, bike and walk, and make sure that we can reach final destinations on Mercer Island and on the east side. And that will be a good benefit to Mercer Island residents and employees to have those connections throughout the region. And then Katie's gonna describe a little bit more about just the vision.
Yeah, sure. So expansion of light rail is really a transformative moment for mobility and transportation in East King County, and Metro sees it as such. Many, many people will access Link directly. They'll walk to stations, they'll all drive a car and park. But we also know that Link is not going everywhere, and Metro wants to be part of the solution in getting people to those stations. And so we see that even as Link and Sound Transit expansion happens, Metro will continue to play really a critical role in providing mobility throughout King County. Metro Connects is Metro's long-range vision, and it not only envisions redeploying service hours from existing routes that travel into Seattle, but also, long-term, really expanding the services Metro provides, including bus service, but also innovative mobility services and other services that we're piloting and trying new as we speak. The interchange at Mercer Island is really a key component in helping Metro achieve this vision of excellent seamless transportation services that people can use to travel throughout the region and throughout King County without having to take their car, really providing options that people can get there on transit.
So let's talk a little bit more about the, how we got here. And so as, Kirsten, is it not on? Is that better? Yeah. Okay. As Kirsten mentioned, we actually started in May 2018, and it was King County Metro and Mercer Island and Sound Transit. And we also consulted with WashDOT, because they have an oversight role on the bridges that are crossing I-90, to look at what we could do to really implement within the settlement agreement. And as we started out, we wanted to all agree on a set of goals and objectives to which we were trying to design this transit interchange to. And so those are outlined here. So essentially, we wanted to have a seamless transfer experience for the customer. So it's intuitive, it's safe, it's barrier-free, it's efficient. We wanted to minimize that walking distance at transfers and the number of street crossings for the bus rail transfers. We wanted to provide excellent multimodal access for customers while also minimizing vehicle mobility impacts near the drop-off locations, minimizing any impacts to pedestrians and bikes. Of course, we wanted to maximize the benefits to Mercer Island, both residents and local employers. We wanted to minimize the property impacts as much as we could, given what was outlined in the settlement agreement, and maintain through vehicle traffic on 80th, over the 80th Southeast Bridge. We're looking for a cost-effective design so we could make a reasonable use of public funds. There was clear direction in the settlement agreement that we didn't want any idling or regional bus circulation through the town center. So the configuration is designed to that. And then, of course, we need to be ready and have it complete before East Link opens in 2023. I'm gonna give an overview of the proposed configuration and the customer experience, and then Katie's gonna describe a bit more about the operations in detail. So this essentially shows the proposed configuration, and it does have the roundabout that was called for in the settlement agreement at the intersection of 77th and North Mercer Way, and that would replace the current three-way or T-junction at the location. Very unfortunately, this does have, substantially impacts the two properties that are near the north of that intersection in order to develop the roundabout that's referred in the settlement agreement. The configuration would essentially allow for buses that are coming from the east, just as they do today, to be coming off the HOV ramp, and then using North Mercer Way, going around the roundabout, coming back off to drop off, and then regional buses exiting back onto I-90. This depiction does show an additional stop just south of the station, about 100 feet south of the station. This is an optional station for Mercer Island to consider. It would be for Mercer Island-only service. And the idea is this could provide for some shorter walk distances from the 80th station entrance in, in the direction of travel to the town center for those who want to transfer to a bus to get them to other destinations on Mercer Island. Couple of components that I wanted to call out for you in terms of what this includes. I started to talk about the, the shortest, a shorter walk distance and transfer for Mercer Island residents with that last stop on 80th. Also, when we looked at overall what's happening for transit customers, the configuration we're proposing provides a relatively short transfer distance, as bus pickup and drop-off points are along North Mercer Way, closest to the 80th Avenue Southeast Station. The configuration would allow for transfer opportunities with the shortest wait times in between rail and bus operations. And then it also provides the greatest flexibility in that, having the proposed bus and flexible transit curb space provides the greatest opportunity for those multimodal access connections and future innovative mobility options. I know Mercer Island is very concerned about, does it implement what's in the settlement agreement? And yes, that's what we, we're all here to do, is figure out how to do that. So of course, it does have the 77th Avenue Southeast configuration with the roundabout. It is, per the settlement agreement, limiting bus volumes to no greater than existing volumes. In fact, it'll be just over half of what there is today. There will be no bus idling. Metro doesn't idle, plus they're converting their fleet to electric buses, and there's no routing of buses through the town center. And we've also been able to be compatible with the bus layover duration that was asked for, and that buses would average to layover no more than 15 minutes. And Katie is gonna describe the operations in more detail.
Thanks. So what Metro service would do on Mercer Island when East Link opens is really different than what it would do today. And so I wanted to walk you through that and explain how this would work operationally, and hopefully that can answer some of the questions about how this would work. So for, for service today, most service that serves Mercer Island, there's, there's some local service, but the majority of service comes on I-90, gets off, serves Mercer Island, and then goes on. There's no, essentially very few buses, only local buses, that actually would, would stay in the transit center, the park and ride area, for any substantial length of time. And because many of those buses are going between Mercer Island and Seattle today, East Link coming means that changes. Metro doesn't have any interest in continuing to run lots of bus service west of Mercer Island that would be essentially duplicating light rail. Link will be more reliable, it will be very fast, and it will provide very frequent service. And so what Metro is looking at is taking advantage of that and then providing ways to help have people connect in. And so rather than being a point along the way that buses are serving, Mercer Island is a point where buses are going to turn around. And so as we talk about this, that's kind of the backdrop for why this substantial change happens. So the way that buses from off the island would circulate through the interchange would be buses would come off I-90. There's a HOV lane connection here. Take a right on 80th and take a left on North Mercer Way. Drop off would be at the area marked number two. So that is where people would get off a bus and then walk south, basically, to access the light rail station. That provides the, really, that shortest distance possible that Jemay was referencing to. After the buses drop off people, they would then proceed to number three or number four, which would be bus layover spaces. After taking a break, essentially, taking a break, parking there for a short duration, buses would proceed to number five, pick up passengers here, and then return to I-90. So I wanted to talk more about three and four and what bus layover is, just because I know that it's really different from how service works on Mercer Island today, and also talk through why, why Metro needs that for, for our operations. And so layover is essentially a break between trips. It's time when our operators take a break. As mandated by state law and Metro's labor contracts, we have requirements to provide that time for our operators to use the restroom and just rest. So that is, that is part of what this space would do. Buses would park there, the operators could take that break. In addition, having layover gives Metro cushion in our schedules. It allows us to minimize the impacts of traffic either on the island or for service coming off the island. We can never achieve 100% accuracy in knowing when buses are coming in and how long they're gonna take. So having a layover allows us to then make sure that as buses go outbound, whether it's taking people south on the island or heading east, we're much more able to schedule them reliably to meet a train or to pick up people more predictably if we have that ability to have a bus wait there, make up time. You know, if it's running late, maybe it just comes through and circulates quickly. But that layover is really a dual purpose for Metro. Comfort, station, basically rest breaks for operators, as well as this reliability piece. And those characteristics of layover are really the same throughout Metro's system. In different places, it's really serving that exact same function. And layover is a requirement for Metro to provide this service in this, in this new world. As Link expands, we, things are really changing. And so this is part of what we need to, for our operational requirements to make service work both on the island as well as for the regional system. And I will say that while we, while this is a requirement and critical for Metro, we also have a strong interest in not providing excessive layover times. Our goal is that buses are in service as much as possible, carrying people for as long of the portion of this, of the time that they're out in the community as possible. So we have incentives not to, not to essentially provide layovers that are longer than needed to satisfy the two purposes that I mentioned. I know that there have been some questions that have come up about why this, why this needs to take place on Mercer Island versus potentially other locations, South Bellevue, Bellevue, and other places. So I wanted to talk a little bit about why Metro sees Mercer Island as really an important location for these connections to occur. And really, And really Mercer Island and providing this connection here is the most direct, fastest, most efficient, and therefore the most attractive for Metro and our customers. It's the most attractive location. Traveling to South Bellevue or other stations would mean longer trips for our riders, and ultimately, longer travel time is what makes people not choose transit or not find transit as an attractive option for their trips. So as we know that demand for transit is rising in the I-90 corridor for many communities, Metro has continually been adding trips over the past several years to accommodate demand. We really want to continue to provide people with that as effective and efficient of a connection as possible, particularly, there are many people in this corridor who will continue to want to go downtown. And even a five- or 10-minute delay can make a difference between someone choosing transit for their whole trip and someone just choosing to take a car and drive and park in one of the garages. We want to provide options that attract people to transit as far upstream as we can. That's how we achieve the highest ridership. That's how we get really greenhouse gas reductions and all of the positive things that we think transit can really bring in the community. So it's really about trying to make transit really as attractive as possible at this location. And I wanted to mention also that really this is, these are the types of changes that Metro and Sound Transit are working on throughout King County and even beyond as Sound Transit expands. Your community is not alone in experiencing really a change in how Metro serves the community, how Sound Transit serves the community, and trying to figure out how these new systems work together. We have stations along Link lines that haven't opened up that have huge amounts of layover, and other communities have also been asking these same questions. So I think it's wise to ask these questions, and I hope that some of the background that I've given you helps at least answer a little bit more from Metro's perspective why this is really a critical function for us to make the transit system work in this area. And really, as we, over the past year or so, as we've talked about this, we've narrowed our focus into those most critical connections that we think really need to happen here. There was a much broader discussion, and Metro Connects actually envisioned more service coming into this station than we're going to propose, you know, based on this configuration. So we really do feel like we've narrowed into those critical connections that are going to make transit attractive in the long run on the east side and with that east side-to-Seattle connection. This interchange is really supportive of that integrated transit network that I think in the transit world we're really going for. We think that's how long-term transit is successful in our region, how we meet goals related to sustainability. It's really about making transit work for people, and this interchange would work for Metro. We think this would meet our operational needs and I think would support the projects that we're looking at going forward. As East Link comes online, Metro's plans include redeploying all those service hours that buses spend between Mercer Island and Seattle today back into the east side. So that's the power of what East Link does for Mercer Island and other communities for Metro, from Metro's perspective. Freeze up those resources where we can let East Link do what it does really well and then figure out how Metro can better serve the needs of the broader east side. And that is a conversation that we will engage with Mercer Island, as well as many other cities, and as we get closer to that launch date for East Link and the build-out. So I think for Metro, it's a time to think about how we meet the needs of all of our cities better. We know that the landscape of transportation is changing, not just on the light rail side, but with new mobility as well, and Metro is here to find ways to be the provider of a broader vision of mobility in our community in the future as well. These types of places where we have these interchange are really critical to making our overall system work. And so I thank you for the continued work to try and find ways that we can achieve that together.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I hope that's helpful background for the community and for council. We're going to go into this second phase.
Pardon me. Are we, Jemay, are we finished, or do you have another?
We do have challenges because we've allocated 30, 30, and 30. So if you have some additional comments, I would ask that they remain fairly brief so we can get to the questions.
Yeah, we mainly wanted to just wrap up with next steps in that we're here today to answer questions on how we're implementing the settlement agreement to meet King County's operational needs. And then, just so you know, in terms of our upcoming schedule, we have already met with the property owners that have been affected. And then, per the settlement agreement, Sound Transit will work with those property owners to do our best using equitable treatment as required by law and is also in our hearts to try to take care of them. And in April, we'll be going to our board to authorize that property acquisition and allow us to start working more closely with those property owners on their options. We'll be back. We're not done, and that in late summer, we're going to be back to work with Mercer Island on that 80th Station frontage and the connections towards the town center and the new development at Tully's. So that will be, the community will have a chance to look at landscaping options and how that will evolve. And then we are moving to a contract to do the final design, and then we'll be moving into construction the fall of 2020, by the fall of 2022, so that we can make sure that this station opens with the rest of East Link.
That's great, and that is helpful. So thank you for adding that on. So now we're actually going to go into the public question and answer.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
We need to take a brief break. We're having technology problems, and so we need to try and address that. So if we could take just a five-minute break while we try and work through this?
We can. Does it, is the problem broadcasting, and does it make any sense for us to continue with questions here from?
It's broadcasting. If we try, if I try and stop and start this, we're going to lose the recording, and we definitely don't want to lose the recording.
No. Okay. So it is 6:12. Hopefully, we'll be back in just five minutes. Deb, have we been able to fix our technical challenges?
We do have recording. We still do not have the video.
Okay, so my apologies to those who are out there. We have, just a second, if I understand correctly, we cannot broadcast right now?
Correct.
But we are able to record.
So the, yeah, the whole, the video, it's being video-recorded, video and audio-recorded. It will be up on the YouTube channel tomorrow. We're still trying to do a couple of things to see if we can get it broadcasting on YouTube Live and on the TV, on the Channel 21. It looks like it's a Channel 21 issue that is then causing a YouTube issue. So IT is working on it. It may flip over at some point, but the video will be up tomorrow morning.
Okay, so while not ideal, we are fortunately capturing it. I do want us to go ahead and get started because I'm sure that there's quite a lot of questions coming from both the public and certainly from council as well. The next portion of our study session will include questions from the public, and so if the public would please kindly sign up in advance, and our city clerk will then be calling your name in the order that you've signed up. The reality is, we're going to be able to take your questions. Unfortunately, we will not be able to answer your questions tonight. Hopefully, the presentation has triggered a further understanding, but equally, you know, some more pointed questions or queries that you might have. The answers will come back, and I believe in expanded FAQ, in additional documentation. So given that they aren't answered tonight, they certainly are being captured, retained, and will be responded to, I think, within a pretty short period of time, I would assume, days. So with that, I'm going to ask the speakers to please go ahead and sign up and then to line up. Deb will be calling your names. This is a two-minute question period. I know our normal public appearances is three, but we're trying to maximize the number of people who get a chance to come before. So with that, Deb, do you have an initial list?
I have one person at the moment, and then I have a secondary list. So our first person is Jackie.
Okay, Jackie, welcome.
Thank you. This won't take two minutes. It's just a simple question. During the presentation that you just gave, you mentioned that Mercer Island is going to be the bus layover for the Metro bus drivers to take their break, which I assume will mean a bathroom break as well. And so what I want to know is, has the plans changed so that the Metro, so that the station on Mercer Island will also include a public facility, what we know as a public bathroom for the general public? Because if you're going to bring hundreds and hundreds of people to the island and not provide a toilet, I don't think that's very good planning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have additional people signed up?
Sarah Fletcher, Mary, and then Tom Alberts.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Sarah Fletcher, and I live at 2,581st Avenue Southeast. I'd just like to ask how the Sound Transit and Metro representatives got here tonight, and if they had plugged in how to get here from the transit center. How did it tell you to get here? And then, I had an email from Bill Hurt, and he suggested what Mercer Island Council should do. And basically, you can find his blog on Stop East Link, no, blog spot. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Mary Soon, and I live at 2,581st Avenue Southeast. If I could just show hands, this isn't a question for later. How many of you arrived here in a car today? Can you raise your hands, please? Okay. Did the rest take rapid transit somehow? Okay, I guess a lot of people didn't get here. Okay, I have a question about the bridge and the experiment that we're doing with the train going across the bridge. It is my understanding that it's a fact that this has never been done anywhere else in the world to have a train on a floating bridge. So that sounds like an experiment. And my question is, how can we eliminate the bus service when what we're planning is an experiment that no one ever in the world has ever done before? And the second thing is that I know there are good engineers working on this, but I don't know if any of us remember when there was an engineering problem and the bridge sank, and it's 200 feet down to the floor of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have further questions?
My name is Tom Alberts, and I live at 227078th Avenue Southeast. So I'm three houses back from where the new roundabout is. And my question to you is, I saw in one of your bullets that you were going to be aware of impact to residential areas. And I was wondering if you were going to put up some sort of sound barrier to keep the sound level down around the roundabout to the neighborhood behind. You're taking out two houses, and there currently is fencing up that I think was probably put up when the park-and-ride was put in many years ago, and some of that may come down. But my basic question is, have you thought about putting up some sort of sound barrier to help reduce the sound impact to the houses behind the roundabout? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Matt Goldbach. I live at 9980 Southeast 40th Street here on Mercer Island. And first, a statement, I'm just surprised, I looked at the agenda packet, and I didn't see any mention of benefits to Mercer Island, to going to the new optimal system that's being suggested. I do understand what it does for transit and for people that live east of here, but I don't see what it's doing for us. Further, it appears that we'd have 60% more buses than was actually agreed upon in the original settlement. And I guess I'm surprised, it doesn't seem to be anything. And I guess I'm surprised, it doesn't seem to be anything being offered by Sound Transit or Metro to the island to take up the rest of the street that's currently being in the optimal settlement. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further questions? Okay, well, see, as I said, it's certainly not your only window, your only opportunity to put forth these questions. Julie, we have "Let's Talk," you can certainly email Kirsten Taylor, Julie, any of the city, or of course, your council, if you have questions, and we'll make sure that they're formally registered and then responded to. So council, we have approximately 30, 35 minutes for questions to the team in front of us. I know that there are a lot of questions, so what I'm going to suggest is, we have a one-question limit, and we'll just kind of go through the line and see how far we can get. I'm going to ask you to be as short and concise, and again, limited to just one question to begin with. "I can randomly choose one side or the other another person." Dave, are you ready to, do you want to start off?
I like it when you randomly choose me, that has helped me. But you did screw me up with the one-question rule there, so-
Well, hopefully, we'll get back around.
I've got to pick a winner on all this. So I've got just some data questions for you guys that are going to be fairly simple. I guess two of them that I'll combine into one simple one. Can someone tell me the travel times from Mercer Island to the East Terminus and Mercer Island to the West Terminus? And then what the train frequency will be on Mercer Island? And I guess that's a trick question, because it depends on the time of day. I got him with the first question.
Looks like our technology challenges are continuing. Luke, is there any chance that maybe your mic works?
It's turned on now.
Oh, great.
No. I was just going to say, our headways, our planned headways for the vehicles running all throughout East Link is six minutes, every six minutes.
Frequency.
Yeah, so that's the design. When you're talking about the East Terminus, you're talking about going all the way out to the Redmond Technology Station?
We do, ride times to the Bellevue Transit Center are 10 minutes, we would have to get back to you on what the travel time is to the-
Yeah, we'd probably add, yeah, it'd probably be about 20 minutes out there. And then, I'll just kind of chime in here, I think this, and if council is okay with it, I think maybe a conversational approach as we talk through some of these questions could probably work well. As far as the Western Terminus for East Link, that's going to be back at the International District Station in downtown Seattle. This line serves as an east-north line, so from there, if a rider wanted to stay on, they could continue up, heading north to North Gate. But from Mercer Island to International District-
We actually don't know that, we do have from, as Luke was just saying, from Mercer Island to the University of Washington, for example, would be 20 minutes.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be less than 10 minutes into the International District Station. We actually have a full matrix of travel times, if folks are interested, we can send those along, and it connects for every single station as we build out. And if we could put that in the FAQs, that would be awesome.
Thanks, Bruce?
Thank you, a confession first, I'm adding to the traffic occasionally on South Bellevue Way as I go and check out what's going on with the construction over there. And one of the things I've noticed is that the parking ride at South Bellevue seems to be coming along quite quickly. And to Mike, the question would be, is there any opportunity for that park-and-ride to potentially open earlier than the whole line? Because that would certainly be a benefit to our users today who are trying to find parking, and I think to Bellevue as well, they've been sort of scattered out into a lot of little lots while the construction's going on.
Yeah, thanks for that question, that's actually a question that's also been raised by Bellevue, it's memorialized in our memorandum of understanding with the City of Bellevue to contemplate such an early opening. So we actually are having that conversation right now. It's dependent upon final systems sequencing, that final system startup and integration work, but yeah, we are, we're currently evaluating that. I would also offer that you should be heartened by the fact that at least one Sound Transit board member is also keenly interested in that, so, yes, top of our organization is well aware.
Saleem.
So for Metro, expanding on the point that you made about redeploying the resources that are freed up by, you know, the East Link service, what can islanders expect in terms of potential metro expansion on the island to help islanders get to the station? I know that, you know, this is pretty forward-looking, but do you have any thoughts about what we, as a council, should try and expect?
Yeah, that's a great question. If you look at Metro Connects, certainly, it's more frequent service along existing routes, essentially. So with light rail coming every six minutes, a bus route that arrives every 30 minutes is not going to seem that great. So certainly, upgrading frequencies is going to be one of the options that we would be looking at, that's Metro Connects envisions more frequency. That would be definitely part of our outreach process, but one of the things that we've learned through our Community Connections Program and other parts of our service planning is that we want to go into this with a fairly open mind to understand, you know, Metro expects that more frequent service is one of the things we want, but are there other things that Mercer Island needs that maybe aren't just that typical bus service? Between now and 2021 or 2022, when we start to have these discussions, we're piloting various other flexible or innovative mobility services, so there could be actually some more options for different kinds of service that come online by then. But at a very basic level, we understand that with super-high-frequency light rail service providing more connecting transit service to get people to the station is going to be more and more attractive over time. So I can't make specific commitments about certain frequencies, but that's definitely the types of thinking that we're doing right now.
I wanted to add to that in terms of that reinvestment to the East Side and how does it benefit Mercer Island. One of the things that we did on request from Mercer Island is just actually count the number of people who are getting on and off the bus on Mercer Island, and there's already 150 to 175 people a day who are using bus transit to destinations that will not be connected by link, are not going to downtown Bellevue and out to Redmond, but they're going to Eastgate, Issaquah, to some of those places, and either coming here to work, going there to work, coming here to visit businesses. So that's already today, what's happening, and you can imagine that as these connections grow, there'll be even more demand.
So I want to stick to my one question, but as a clarification, when you say East Side, you mean Mercer Island as well, right? When you're redeploying resources from Metro that are freed up by the train, that includes redeploying them on Mercer Island?
Yes, Mercer Island is part of the project area that we'll be talking about.
Thanks.
Yep.
Great, Benson?
I'm going to use that tactic by the deputy mayor.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
So, you know, looking back to the settlement agreement, just by way of context, I mean, one of the focuses is and has been and will be pedestrian safety. And so that was one of the reasons why the focus was on, in the settlement agreement, requiring the drop-off on the south side of North Mercer Way. Obviously, all the configurations that we've seen from Sound Transit and Metro is basically dropping people off on the north side of North Mercer Way, basically number two. The question I have is, is it possible, the buses go around the roundabout and simply drop off people at the westernmost part of what is identified as number four?
Do you think we could get that visual put back up? It might help everybody follow.
That would be helpful, and there, they'll be very close to the entrance on 77th, and I understand the point about the layover, but I guess the question would be, they drop off, and then the buses move forward along that stretch. If they have to do a layover, they can do a layover.
So you're essentially asking, why would we drop off here, why would we not just go around?
And the concern is about people crossing-
Right.
-North Mercer Way.
Yeah.
Trying to catch the bus, to catch the rail.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. What we see is that there's going to be a space for essentially one bus here, and so if a bus bypasses a space and goes around and drops people off here, there's no way for a bus to get back to this space without circulating essentially through the town center. So that's why we really want to drop people off here, so that buses can access any of the layover spaces that they might need to access, and not have to recirculate somewhere else, essentially on the island here. From a service planning perspective, we also like the idea of letting people off the buses as soon as we can. People don't tend to react super well to having to ride the bus around, they're going to see a train sitting here and want to go get on it, and so our, another reason that we prefer dropping off at number two, and we think that works well for this circulation issue, but also to allow people to get off the bus as soon as they can, whether they're coming from a local Mercer Island route or another route.
Great, thank you, Lisa.
Okay, let's see if I can be tricky about this. I have a clarification and a question. How many buses will layover? Is it every single one?
We don't know exactly whether every single bus will layover, but we need four layover spaces essentially to make this service configuration work.
Well, and that leads into my actual question, which is, prefaced with, I am very concerned about new proposed space three, because it essentially sandwiches the lower deck of the parking, park-and-ride exit driveway between two stopped buses. And I have real concerns about pedestrian safety, visibility, vehicular exiting safety, and the loss of up to five trees, a loss of, you know, just a buffer between the roadway and the neighborhood behind. So the question that I have is, you know, how would it, how would it impact your operations if you did not have space three? Couldn't you still layover in spaces two, four, and five?
In this configuration, the number two and five are essentially active spaces, so buses are not laying over there, that's where the buses stop today, and those would essentially function very similar to the way they do today. So the layover we're talking about is a space for three buses here and one bus here, and we need those four spaces to meet Metro's operational needs in this configuration. That fourth space is needed for Metro to be able to provide the service that we're envisioning here.
But you haven't, well, you haven't really defined the service yet, though, because that's all part of the upcoming study.
It is, but in order to achieve, we do have our vision, which laid out fairly specific assumptions about which services and where they would come from for this facility, and so that, those are the assumptions that we're using to build this plan.
Great, Wendy?
Do you want to give the example of the every six minutes, and we might go to East Link?
Sure, yeah, so to think about, how would this work if you're a rider, if you're in this area? Link will arrive every six minutes, and to think, Metro could potentially plan bus services that, you know, a train comes in and a bus goes to Eastgate, a train comes in and a bus goes to Eastgate and Issaquah, like, that's the type of operations we would be looking to create here, is where a train arrives, particularly in the peak periods where there is going to be a heavier volume of travel, and people can easily get there, and then we would just have buses taking those people onto the further parts, further east where Link isn't arriving. And so that's the type of operations, we would see buses come in, drop people off, layover at three or four, and then, you know, as they're preparing to go into service, essentially pull into this space number five, pick up people, and then go out to a variety of destinations further out east in the I-90 corridor.
And then it desired the local buses?
Local buses, what we're looking at is this, this stop number here is really an optional stop, it's really up to the city of Mercer Island whether you want us to stop buses there, but we can either pick people up here at Bay Five, or I keep calling them Bays, but number five, and then buses would go south to circulate. Or if you so chose, we could have buses stop here, with a little bit shorter walk distance to take people further. So that would be a Mercer Island-only stop, and from Metro's perspective, that would be really up to the city on how you would want to run, to have us stop there or not, and we could work that out as we get closer to actual opening of light rail here.
I would also just offer, you make a good point, council member on the safety issue, and that's certainly paramount to us. So when you look at that, that approximate 145 feet, when Katie mentioned one bus laying over there, so the longest bus that would be there would be like a 60-foot articulated bus, so it would not be taking up the entire space. And one thing that we do, as design progresses, is we look at things like site distances, and we analyze those turn movements to make sure that all vehicle sizes are able to get in and out of the garage safely. And for those folks, you know, familiar with that spot, as I'm sure everybody is, there's the center curve there, which essentially makes it a ride-in, ride-out only, which makes it more of a controlled movement as people are coming in and out. But it's a good point, and it's something that we're going to be looking at in the design process to make sure that works.
Okay, and so if the longest bus is 60 feet, then two could actually fit there, right?
Our configuration, what we've been assuming is that one goes there, I think that some of the, some of the details of how long it would be, would be related to design and site distances and safety. So that would be, I think, something that we would have to look at. But yes, the longest bus we operate is 60 feet, I don't expect that to change. There is some additional space needed for pulling in and out, yeah.
Great. Well done, Wendy.
First of all, thank you for being here, thank you for the materials that we read ahead of time, and then for this presentation. So I want to expand a little bit on number seven there, because we had a former council member that was adamant that nothing happened on 80th, and I understand it's optional, and if you could just explain more the benefits and why that might be something we would want to consider, especially given all the movement up there on North Mercer Way. So just expand a little more on what that looks like, so that we're clear, and so our public can be crystal clear about what you mean by Mercer Island only.
Okay, sure, so because of where this would be, any buses that are essentially going off the island couldn't serve the zone, they can't serve it with that, and then get on to I-90. When we think about what, when someone's coming on East Link to Mercer Island, and they get off the train, and then they want to take a bus, the vast majority of people are going south, they're going into the town center, or they're even going further south into the rest of the island. So if someone gets out of here, comes out of the station here and walks back here, I mean, it's a minor issue, but they're going out of direction, so they're going to feel like, wait, I'm walking back this way to go south. This is going to be a little bit shorter of a walk, you're going to come up and it's going to be, you would hopefully be able to see it right there. The stop would most likely be in lane, we wouldn't be looking for any sort of bus pullout or anything like that, it would really be for Mercer Island resident, or Mercer Island-only service, so the number of buses stopping there would be pretty, like, relatively low compared to the number of buses that would be stopping over here. Metro's, if you think about a bus that comes twice an hour, 30 minutes, and think about what that looks like from a street, it's not going to feel like there's a lot of service there, it's not, I don't think you would experience a major impact on traffic operations or anything like that. It would provide a better connection for people coming out of the station, and so that's why we were sort of interested in it, but it is totally, it's a city choice, really, on whether or not you consider that important. We're, you know, operationally, we can stop in this bay on North Mercer Way and still provide the same level of service, same number of trips and everything, so it's really about walk distance and what you want that entrance from the station into the town center to kind, could it feel like and look like for residents and visitors.
Okay, I'm going to take a turn. And then, just summarizing, even in terms of what I've heard this first round, and that is, under goals and objectives, what I didn't see listed, and what I've been hearing from council and from the public as well, is reference to maximizing the safety of bike, ped, and motorist interchange. So I think that is primary in people's minds. The second point is to minimize the physical infrastructure of this facility. Those of you who were around three, four years ago, when we were looking at some of the different drawings, they were significantly more imposing than what we see now. So I think those are two important components to keep in mind. My question comes down to a point of confusion that I have had, and that is, the timeline or the service levels to which you are designing this. If we say it's 2025, then I understand that the 550 goes away, et cetera. Then equally, there's conversation, though, about redeploying those service hours from the East Side, which would bring potentially as-yet undefined bus service to the island. Now, if you extend your time horizon or your planning horizon beyond 2040, you're actually going to have light rail, ideally, out to Issaquah, in which case, you would assume then that people are not coming in from the I-90 corridor, North Bend, Issaquah, potentially even Eastgate, onto the island. So you've used some sort of model to come up with this proposed configuration. So you've used some sort of model to come up with this proposed configuration. What timeline are you using? And what levels of service in light rail are the benchmarks?
I can answer part of that question in terms of the timeline and why we see it worthwhile. Any extension to Issaquah is at least 20 years away, right? And so that's a good chunk of somebody's career. It's a generation. It's worth making a good transit connection to, for the people who are trying to connect from light rail to bus.
So you're assuming that, that you will not, that this is being designed for the time preceding extension along the I-90 corridor?
Right. And as Katie can follow up with, really, the amount of space is pretty much what determines how much service can serve this island. That's really the predetermining factor. And so that's why Metro was saying these four spaces are basically the minimum they can use to meet their operational needs. And we've also talked about that over time. By the time we get to 2040, when Issaquah is there, there could be need for all kinds of, there could be autonomous vehicles. There could be, you know, an expansion of lift and ride share. So we'd be able to really look at how we use this flexibility and evolve over time. But there's a good amount of time before we get there that we need to make a good connection to.
Okay, great, thank you. So, council, we have about, well, between 10 and 15 minutes. So we're going to do lightning rounds, starting with Dave.
Okay. These are, again, fairly easy data questions. Do you have an estimation of your, the total increase in ridership? So you experienced, you have ridership on the bus today and what the total increase is. And then I, I was going to ask the percentage that transfer from bus to rail, but I guess it's almost 100%, right? Because you won't, you said you won't run duplicative routes.
I can talk about Metro ridership in this area, which of course is not the complete story. But in the future, we would expect essentially almost complete bus-rail transfer at this location. We do, we do not know whether the 630 would be discontinued or not. It doesn't go to downtown Seattle. So there is some nuance in that discussion, but we would expect a much higher transfer rate. And if you look at, say, when the first light rail line opened and then when University Link opened, Metro, or there's, the system as a whole has seen in dramatic increases in bus-rail transfers. I think, I don't know if this is the latest, but I think in the period after UW Station opened, there was 5,000 people a day transferring between bus and rail at that station. That, that's a much bigger transfer point, but that's kind of a scale of, of that kind of activity. We have, sorry, and on Metro services, not counting the 550 and 554 today, we have, I can get the exact number, but I believe it's in the range of 6,000 or 7,000 boardings a day on the I-90 services. We would definitely expect some of those people would go straight to light rail in the future. So that might not be a perfect analog, but it's a, it's a substantial market today for transit. We want, we want it to grow.
And that actually helps, but I think I was asking a Link question, which is if you have 6,000 riders today on the 550, how many do you expect to have on Link for those same routes? Do you expect, I would think the aggregate goes up.
Right. Do you mean Link overall, or do you mean specifically on East Link?
I mean specifically East Link. Mercer Island riders, sorry to be selfish about Mercer Island, but that's, yeah, that's what we're focusing on.
We're projecting in 2030, 50,000 daily riders project-wide on East Link.
Bruce?
Katie, you talked about the benefit to eastside folks of coming to Mercer Island Station rather than going to the Bellevue Station or the South Bellevue Station. And I, I think that makes good sense in the sense of the, the shorter time that you're predicting that those folks would spend in their commute if they, if they're coming to Mercer Island. There are those in the community who are not warmed by that as an argument and have said and will say, send them to South Bellevue instead. I know in the report, there's talk of South Bellevue having buses coming and doing bus-rail change there. Can you just speak a little bit more to what is planned there and, and what the expectation of, of those drop-offs is?
Sure. There are some, there's a, a very small subset of services that come across I-90 that could go to a South Bellevue Station, and it's the services that come up 405. Just because of the way those interchanges work, that might be a location that actually is faster because those, those routes avoid some of the really difficult merging that would have to take place. South Bellevue Station is, is not built to be a big bus-rail transfer station in terms of having layover space. So if we were to take these routes not to Mercer Island, we would be looking at most likely running them all the way into downtown Bellevue. And so there is a substantial operational, additional operational cost we would face there. Duplication with light rail then comes back into play because Link's going to be providing that connection. So there, the, there's not essentially comparable space to this that could be available at South Bellevue Station. So there are constraints operationally on what we would have to do if we were not able to bring buses to Mercer Island. Does that answer your question?
I think a part of an additional answer that you all had looked at is if the transit riders were, let's say, coming from Issaquah and going out of direction up to South Bellevue and then trying to do the merge back in, that would be adding, it could be up to 10 minutes each way. So that, that extra 20 minutes starts to make it not all that desirable to do a full transit trip versus drive to a park and ride and, and park and take Link. The other thing that we looked at is that, that South Bellevue park and ride is already full. So all the, it's already under construction and all of the spaces that we allocated for what transit would happen there, that's already, it's already full. So there isn't room to add more there.
Saleem?
So Metro question. On the 15-minute average layover, can you talk operationally about how that works and which buses are included in that calculation? And the reason I ask is you're going to have these active load-unload bays, and you have these waiting bays. And I'm interested in knowing, understanding better, how the buses, how frequently they're really entering and exiting these waiting bays. A bus that's there for one minute and a bus that's there for 28 minutes is going to average 15. I'm guessing that's not how this is going to work. But I'm going to leave it to you to explain the 15-minute average.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think the time period when we would expect to use the layovers most intensely are in the peak commute periods. And so that's the periods where you would experience the most number of buses essentially waiting at any given time. The, there are, there are minimum layovers that are specified in Metro labor agreements. And so essentially, as we develop detailed schedules for this service, that would be the determination of how long they would actually sit there. If you look at PM peak layover spaces in other parts of the county, some buses might be there for 10 minutes, some buses might be there for 20 minutes. So you're right, 10 minutes. There might be layovers that exceed that 15 minutes. One thing that we would be looking at is, this isn't the only layover that exists for these routes. There's two ends, and there's layover at both ends. So there is, there is some interplay where if the layovers were getting really lo, seeming really long here, that we can adjust on the other end. But essentially, we don't know exactly what those layovers will look like until we develop the actual bus schedules. And it depends on, on where we're trying to go and how frequently they're going. So the average is based on, you know, our best guesses, but we would get into the details of how long they would be there when we get there with the schedules. The other thing is, Metro operators know this very well, but what is on paper as a scheduled layover is not what we always actually achieve because of traffic. So we could have situations where you would see a 15-minute layover on paper, but some days it's only five minutes, or some days it's shorter.
The, the active loading and unloading buses being involved in the calculation or not?
They're not involved, no. So this would be buses that are just sitting there. How long are they parked there? So that, that's a 15-minute. But again, I will say that's not based on a detail, detailed scheduling. Scheduling would occur much later in our process. But we're, we definitely are aware of the, the concern about the, the length and would keep that in mind.
And you can imagine in the peak hour with the train arriving every six minutes, that it really could be a lot quicker. And it's worth remembering that what the settlement agreed, called for was to have no more buses than there are today, which is over 30. And even under this configuration, we're still looking at just over half that. So there'd be less buses than there are on the island today.
Great. Benson?
You know, given the time constraints, I'm not sure if there's going to be much time to, to address this. But we haven't really looked at or, in a presentation, talked about what the roundabout and Bay Three looks like. Obviously, there's a lot of bike traffic. Bike riders and pedestrians go along that way. I don't know if you have any kind of overlay that sort of indicates or shows what it might look like. I think there is that concern that people have with potential collisions of bicycle riders and pedestrians and what have you.
Yes, I can go to you. We do have a image that shows that. And I can talk a little bit about it. What I'm hearing you ask for is more about the safety and how it would work for both pedestrians and cars. Yeah. So I have a lot to say, so I'll try to keep it pretty short. So one of the things that we have heard is they're concerned about the design of the roundabout and if it would be less safe for pedestrian and bikes. And so there is actually studies by both the Highway Safety and Federal Highway Administration where they study roundabouts. And they show that roundabouts reduce injury crashes significantly. So they've seen a 37% reduction in overall, 75% reduction in industry, eh, injuries, and then 90% reduction in fatalities and 40% reduction in pedestrian coalitions. And there's a number of reasons for that, and I'm happy to send you links to those website, websites. But essentially, we too care very much about that pedestrian crossing and how this works. And so what we would be designing this roundabout to do is to improve the safety of all modes, including pedestrians. So part of what happens is the geometry of a roundabout forces a vehicle to slow down as it enters and exits the roundabout, which increases the safety for all users. Will, our design will verify the sightlines for pedestrians and vehicles and make sure they exceed the standards from WashDOT. And that includes looking at the bus layover zones. We do have a crossing in the design from the I-90 trail north of Mercer Way to the light rail station on 77th. And that's a full 10-foot wide trail connection that would provide ample space for pedestrians to cross the street. The crosswalks at roundabouts are set further back from the vehicle traffic, allowing drivers to see and react before they reach the intersection. They also provide a mid-crossing refuge because you can, you only need to cross one lane of traffic at a time as opposed to where you think about when you're at a traffic signal, you have to cross, you know, all the lanes of the intersection. So I can, you know, go on even further. I can send you website links. But the bottom line is this actually could be safer for pedestrians and be designed to be safe for all users. One of the things that Mercer Island staff have asked us to assume is that wider connection for the I-90 trail. And then also to assume we're putting sharrows on North Mercer Way and on 77th, and that the roundabout could accommodate bikes if they choose to, to travel around the roundabout. But there, again, there would be that connection from the trail across down to the 77th station.
Great. Lisa?
Thanks. And this is a question that I asked before, and I still don't have an answer to it. So maybe you can just get back to me on it. But that is, what evidence do you have that the 150 to 175 trips to and from areas not served by East Link are Mercer Island residents as opposed to people who are just coming in from other areas to park in the park and ride? If you have that data, I would love that. And that's, and then my real question is, what if you succeed beyond your wildest dreams and the trains are full? I mean, are you going to be coming back and asking to put buses back from the east side to Seattle?
Sound Transit, correct me if I'm wrong, plans to operate four-car trains every six minutes. That's a lot of capacity.
So, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll hop in on that. We have modeled out to, you know, ma, the max is beyond PSRC's wildest dreams as far as population and employment. Each one of the, the cars can comfortably have about 150 people. That means about half of them are sitting, half of them are standing. We can fit about 200 in there, and it's pretty tight, but it's still very doable.
On your way to a Sanders game.
Yeah, exactly. Big event. So like the Seahawks, you know, Super Bowl parade was a great example if anyone was near Link then. So that's 800 people that were able to move every six minutes. So obviously, it's something we monitor because, you know, that ride experience is really important to our folks. We don't want them on a packed train every time. But our ridership model shows that, that we're going to be able to accommodate even the far reaches of some of the regional growth projections.
Great. Wendy?
So final question is, I'm thinking about private employers and their shuttles, the Microsoft, the Amazons, right? Do you, you're probably in conversations, or maybe you're not, or maybe you should be. Could you tell me how you envision or how you've been hearing how Metro and private shuttles and all of this is going to help support mobility for all of us with all these modes of transportation?
That's a really great question. So yeah, Metro, Metro works a lot with private employers. Private employers and ORCA, our ORCA Passport Program provides a substantial amount of, sort of riders and service to Metro. So some private employers share information about their shuttle systems and some don't. Metro's, wherever we can, we get information about where they're operating private, private shuttles so that we can, one, try and complement and accommodate them as much as possible. Metro also has a, a new program that we're piloting called a shared employee shuttle program. So presently, private employers are free to operate any shuttle they want to, but it can just go to their one company. They can't get together because that's, that's considered public transportation. Metro is piloting a process whereby employers approach us and say, hey, we actually want to partner on this. And Metro can say, great, that, you know, our process is ensuring that, we don't want private employers duplicating service that we're already providing. But for gaps where we're not meeting the need, we have this process in place now where we can work with the employers and say that, that total, you know, we see that there's this need, you know, we are, we're supportive of you meeting that need. And we actually, in the recent, in recent weeks, we've seen the, on a, an application from an employer for, or partnering employers that we saw for the first time, we're like, yeah, actually, this looks like something that makes sense for the private shuttle providers to, to provide. So we are working really closely. We know that's a huge part of the transportation system at this point in time. I mean, Microsoft and Google kind of paved the way there in many ways. But we, we want to partner more to make sure that those shuttle systems complement Metro. But we also understand that that's most likely going to be a continued critical part of how people get to these really huge employers who have the means and resources to provide that kind of service for their employees.
Can you go back to that slide where we were before that showed the roundabout, please? I think I'm going to go ahead and wrap this up. I'm actually quite impressed with everybody, so thank you. I mean, I personally, and I suspect on behalf of staff and council, would also like to express our hope and expectation that Sound Transit Metro, you know, work with the best of intent and best spirit with these two families who are going to be so significantly impacted. They are part of our community. We would like to see them remain part of our community. And as such, I think that's an important part of the relationship that we hope to build. I'm also looking at the amount of space I'm also looking at the amount of space that is required of those properties based on this particular design, and when we don't see the full lot lines articulated, it seems there's a fair amount of real estate there that might not be actively used. I mean, I can make a statement and also turn it into a question insofar as, you know, I hear a lot from the biking, the cycling community about bike lockers, perhaps there's, you know, other wayfinding elements. What are the plans that you might have with that remaining property? And of course, picking up on one of our residents' feedback, what kind of infrastructure do you plan to build to ensure that those other, the neighborhoods around there are relatively buffered? So it's about the delta between what you need for the roundabout and what remains.
Well, I'll maybe start on this one. And I'll say that, and I would believe this would be good news, Mayor, is that we don't currently have assumptions, long-term plans, for that property. We work really closely with the jurisdictional partners on a development strategy. So that's something that you can expect us to be working very closely with you and your staff on. No assumptions as to what could happen there. I think in the near term, and Mike could turn my mic off if he wants, in the near term, you know, obviously, we need this space to support the construction of the roundabout. So that would likely be what's happening first. We're securing our site. We're making sure that it's safe, that it's not accessible, and we're making sure that we can get this work done. I think I would also reference back to a previous comment I'd made about, you know, the fact that we've got design here, but we're still fairly early in the design process. So I heard reference from, reference to the existing fence there on the backside. So there is a portion of a fence that we're assuming we would take out, and we would replace that. As far as what could happen on the backside of those properties here in the immediate future, again, that's something that we want to work with the city on as far as landscaping, you know, some other type of fencing. And that's something that, as the design progresses, that we would start getting into that level of detail. And, you know, I would say also keep in mind that, just as with any other project, and just as you've done with this project, East Link in particular, you know, we will be submitting plans for comment, for review, and, yeah, so that'll be kind of an iterative process. But we'll be back to talk about the long-term vision, and we want to have the city as a partner there.
Super. Well, that's great. And I think that is a call to action to the public to start thinking about, you know, what good use of the property, the buffering, the design could be. Again, a big thanks. This is obviously a huge amount of material. There's going to be a tremendous amount of public interest. We appreciate your openness, your time, and I suspect that we'll be continuing to build a fairly robust FAQ as we go forward. So with that, again, a big thanks. I'm sure we'll be seeing you again in the near future. And Julie or Kirsten, any comments on next steps or what the community can look forward to in terms of absorbing and providing feedback to us?
We have received a number of questions that the staff will work with our partners here to address. You'll see that on a Q&amp;A page that's part of Let's Talk. There were a couple follow-up questions I received tonight from council, so we'll work with ST and Metro to address those. And I think we'll be talking later about potentially coming back. Want to discuss that with council when we discuss maybe the planning schedule, looking at that, but maybe in about a month's time, something like that.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. With that, council and public, we're going to go take a break until 7:15 and resume the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
All right. I think we're going to go ahead and pick up with our regular agenda. Great. Welcome, everyone.
Ellen? Eileen? Sorry.
And thank you for being here. The council has completed its study session and will now move on to special business, which is Agenda Bill 5535, and it's a proclamation for Women's History Month. For this, I'm going to turn it over to Ali. We have a great guest and some inspiring messages.
Good evening, Mayor Burtland and city council members. For the record, I'm Ali Speet, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, we are celebrating Women's History Month, and as part of this celebration, we have published a series of articles in the Mercer Island Weekly, the city's e-newsletter, featuring city leaders in our community. Each week, we are featuring Mercer Island women in leadership, for those on the city council, on the city's leadership team, and on advisory boards and commissions. And in addition, this evening, we have Eileen Concanon with us to receive the proclamation on behalf of the community. Eileen is a Mercer Island resident, community activist, retired attorney, and is an advocate for women's rights and marginalized communities. She is the current Chair of the Stanley Anne Dunham Scholarship Fund Board, which works to empower young women to be leaders and active world citizens through education and service. Eileen, please come forward.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and jump in, and I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we're going to have Eileen say a few words. I would also call out that we're very fortunate to have Claire Meeker here, who's also been instrumental in the Stanley Anne Dunham Scholarship process, as well as any other, many other initiatives here on the island. So with that, the proclamation reads, "Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social movement, whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside the home, and by providing the majority of volunteer labor in the nation. Whereas the 2019 National Women's History theme, 'Visionary Women,' champions a peace and nonviolence, honors women who have led efforts to end war, violence, and injustice, and pioneered the use of nonviolence to change society. Whereas the 2019 International Women's Day campaign theme, 'Balance for Better,' which celebrate women's achievements while calling for a more gender-based, balanced world. And whereas gender balance is essential for economies and communities to thrive. Whereas the city of Mercer Island is celebrating Women's History Month by featuring different groups of women city leaders each week in the MI Weekly, Mercer Island Women Pioneers, the city council, the city leadership team, and city boards and commission members. And whereas, excuse me, the city of Mercer Island City Council collectively with the city's leadership team currently maintains a perfect 50/50 gender-balanced team of leaders. And whereas Eileen Concanon, Mercer Island resident, community activist, retired attorney and Chair of the Stanley Anne Dunham Scholarship Fund Board, is accepting the proclamation for her work as an advocate for women's rights and marginalized communities. Now therefore I, Debbie Burtland, Mayor of the city of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim, March 2019, as Women's History Month in the city of Mercer Island, and urge all islanders to take the opportunity to empower women in all settings, rural and urban, and celebrate the activists who are working relentlessly to claim women's rights and realize their full potential." Thank you.
Thank you.
So Eileen is going to say a few words, and I said in particular, I'm very excited to hear what her call to action is.
Well, first, before the mayor leaves the podium, I want to give her a gift. I was told it's just fine. It's ethical and legal. Here we go. Hey, folks. Remember Rosie the Riveter?
Oh, my goodness. This is awesome.
I'm sure she'll have plenty to put in that bag and carry along with it.
And so too will my daughters.
We can do it. We are doing it.
We are doing it, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone, on this beautiful spring day on Mercer Island. Thank you, Mayor Burtland, city council members, fellow board member Claire Meeker, your indispensable support staff, friends, and fellow lawyers and supporters. I am honored to join you on behalf of the Board of Directors and Advisory Council of a nonprofit that was founded on this island 10 years ago in the name of the mother of President Barack Obama and Dr. Maya Sotora Ing, the Stanley Anne Dunham Scholarship Fund. As mentioned, Dr. Maya will be joining us for three days in May to celebrate our fund's 10th anniversary. Maya shares the same temperament, global perspective, kind heart, and optimistic outlook as in life and on life as her brother and as their mother before them. If you're interested in meeting Maya and attending one of our events, give me a call the old-fashioned way. I am in the local phone book. Pretty amazing. I was born at a time and in a place where girls, and for that matter, boys, had few, if any, options available from birth onward. I grew up in the segregated South, where gender, skin color, ethnicity, nationality, educational status, occupation, father's income, and a family's position in the local community pretty much dictated almost every aspect of what a child could expect and almost every aspect of her life from birth onward. I think most of us, wherever we were born, and no matter the decade, would say something similar. But from a gender perspective, I think most of us have personally experienced and welcomed the dramatic changes in this country and in many places around the world that have allowed both men and women to be better balanced, to use their skills and talents to contribute to healthier and happier families, neighborhoods, communities, and countries, to be both the yin and the yang, the nurturer and the provider, the user of the right brain and the left. When I was a kid, women were rarely, if ever, bus drivers, ministers, newscasters, weather forecasters, dentists, lawyers, athletes, conductors, mayors, senators, bankers, council members, and the list goes on and on. And when I was a kid, men were rarely, if ever, nurses, cooks, teachers, nonprofit board members, waitstaff, dental hygienists, secretaries, hairdressers, stay-at-home dads, caregivers, and the list goes on and on. And I remember as a teenager, opening the local newspaper to the classified ad section, and under jobs available, there were two separate pages. Again, I grew up in the segregated South and probably before many of you. On one page, jobs available-women. On the other page, jobs available-men. That was legal. That was it. These lines of demarcation based on one's gender in almost every aspect of everyday life had been set in stone, maybe a little porous, but not much, not for centuries. Fortunately for all of us, we are living in an era that has seen remarkable changes as to what used to be set in stone is not that set anymore. When my husband Roger and my son Sean was about 10, he's now 25, he asked me one day, Mom, can a man be a doctor, or a lawyer, or veterinarian, or dentist? And of course, I laughed, because all of those four professionals in our lives were women. And I said, yes, hon. Yes, sweetie, a man can be all of those. The theme for the 2019 International Women's Day campaign is Balance for Better, as the mayor told us. Think about what the concept and the reality of balance from a gender perspective has meant to all of us, how it has affected our home life, our child-rearing enjoyment, career fulfillment, improved neighborhoods, governments, businesses, pretty much every aspect of our lives. The women's movement benefited women in many ways, no doubt, but it also has benefited men and children equally, since each one of us now lives in a world where the stones on which the rules were written are more porous than ever, allowing for cracks and crevices, allowing for talent to be realized and dreams to be fulfilled. Stanley Anne Dunham was a true pioneering woman. She came west to Seattle in 1956 from Kansas as a teenager. She continued to move west to Hawaii as a young adult after graduating from Mercer Island High School in 1960. She then even moved further west to Indonesia after giving birth to Barack Obama. She worked for decades with marginalized communities in Indonesia and throughout the world while raising two extraordinary children, Dr. Maya being the other. Please join us at our 10th anniversary of celebrating Stanley Anne's life and the legacy she left behind in the form of her two children. Let's celebrate a woman who helped balance the world and the gender gap for the better in all areas of her life. Thank you, and it's been an honor to share this evening with you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Well, I think we should have, if I may be so bold, the women to come down for this photo. Claire? Claire, Wendy, and Lisa, sorry, guys. Claire is past Chair of our wonderful board. Maybe over here. Julie, you should be in this. Carrie, Ali, this is, we're going to do it. We're going to do it big.
Evan's going to take the picture.
Which of you guys is going to take our picture?
Evan's taking the picture. I have a lot of responsibility.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me. Oh sure, I just wrote it in the last hour. Yeah, I'll be happy to send it to you, yeah.
Great.
I see it flickering.
Well, I will be honest, that I think was a particularly super proclamation and recognition tonight, so thank you for that. I'm now also trying to catch up with all my paperwork up here, so if you'll bear with me, next on the agenda, we actually have the City Managers' Report, and for that, I'm gonna welcome Julie Underwood.
See, there we are again. Well, I, let me just start off by, on behalf of, really, the entire leadership team, how proud we are of our city clerk, Deb Estrada. She was recognized at the Municipal Clerks Association Annual Conference as the entire state of Washington's Clerk of the Year. And I had the pleasure of being there for that, and actually, it was her former city, Sunnyside, Washington, that submitted her nomination. And so, really neat to actually, kind of, yeah, is it the first time for the associate, so really neat that, and unfortunately, none of them could attend, so we got to reap on all the benefits of really having Deb as our Clerk of the Year. So really proud of her, really proud of her. And there she is with her husband, as you can see, very happy, and just really proud of this accomplishment.
So if I can comment, doesn't she join Ellie's speech in the City Clerk Hall of Fame? All right, we have two.
So we have two.
Two.
Yeah, so, pretty cool. And anyway, it was really fun to be there for that. Also, want to congratulate our MIYFS Foundation. What an amazing event they put on this year. And as you may recall, this was an event that got snowed out, and so they had to actually reschedule the event. They had about a six, almost a 7% guest attrition rate, and so even with those odds of having less participants, they saw almost a 4% increase in the amount raised, so $377,000. And congratulations to them for achieving that. Sponsorship was up like 10%, the raffle sale prizes were up 117%. And they are still awaiting shop local proceeds and post-event donations, so I'm really fingers crossed, maybe that number will actually increase. Recently, this was featured, hopefully some of you saw this on the local news, but our very own Mountains to Sound Greenway has received a very distinguished honor of being the newest National Heritage Area. National Heritage Areas are places that are designated by Congress where historic, cultural, and natural resources combine to form cohesive, nationally-important landscapes. The NHA designation is a creative, non-regulatory approach to conservation and really rooted in cooperation among tribal, federal, state, municipal agencies, and local residents. The Mountain to Sounds Greenway joins 54 other national historic area sites in 32 states, including iconic and historic landscapes such as New York's Niagara Falls and North Carolina's Blue Ridge National Heritage Area. Want to draw your attention to the upcoming Transportation Improvement Program, finally called the TIP. Mercer Island and other cities in Washington are required by law to prepare an annual update to their six-year TIP. This includes roadway, pedestrian, bicycle projects planned for the six-year period beginning in 2020. Public comment starts now, and will go through April 15. We have a new map-based interface where you can drop pins at any island location with comments or suggestions about crosswalks, upgraded connector trails, repaving, safe routes to schools, ADA comments, traffic problems, all kinds of matters. Public hearing on that draft, TIP, will be held here in the council chamber on May 7. The council is currently scheduled to adopt that TIP on June 4. Anyone interested in learning more, you may view the TIP adopted last year, of course, on the city's website. You may also submit comments or questions on a project page on Let's Talk. There are a number of, a few volunteer restoration events happening this month. Coming up on Saturday, March 23, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., it's the Gallagher Hill Open Space, so right out here. Residents are asked to meet here at City Hall and to register at mountainsgreenway.org. In addition, the following Saturday, March 30, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Island Crest Park. So meet in the parking lot there, and you may register at earthcore.org. Wanted to mention a tree removal notice that has gone up. The city has identified, the council may recall this as part of your CIP conversation, but identified an area in Town Center where we have to address upheaval of sidewalk panels. There are four trees on Southeast 30th that we need to remove, and we're targeting to remove those the last week of March. Removal is necessary, as I mentioned, to really reduce tripping hazards and to really kind of manage some of the, really, the tree, the health of the tree not being as healthy. Replacement trees will be included as part of this project. We are proposing to replace the tree species with something that's perhaps a little slow-growing and less aggressive roots. So, we are also establishing an early pruning program that will prevent the structural flaws that we've seen in a majority of the Town Center's mature street trees. We have an upcoming spring recycling event on Saturday, March 30, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It'll be located at the Luther Burbank South Parking Lot. This is a great opportunity for our residents to safely dispose of old equipment and household items, cluttering your basement or garage. Accepted items include clothing, electronic equipment, styrofoam, cardboard, batteries. You can also bring tires, propane tanks, scrap metal, and appliances for a fee. And there's also confidential document shredding that's being offered. Also, a limited number of rain barrels are available for purchase for $25, and that is limited to one per household. We are also collecting for our food pantry, non-perishable food items. If you'd like more information, visit mercergov.org/recyclingevent. Some of you may have heard of Vision 2050. This is all part of the state's Growth Management Act, so we are part of the Puget Sound Regional Council, and they are updating the regional plan for managing growth. Right now, they're forecasting that the region will need to plan for 1.8 million additional people and 1.2 million new jobs by 2050. The regional growth strategy will inform then the citywide, I'm sorry, county-wide growth targets and city comprehensive plans. So all of this really kicks off to eventually lead into the city updating its comp plan. So here's a quick overview of what the Vision 2050. So right now, PSRC is embarking on their draft supplemental EIS process, or their state environmental impact statement process. Comments are due through April 29. There are basically three alternatives being considered. One is stay the course. And what does that mean? Basically, compact growth focused in the metropolitan areas, core cities with regional growth centers. So basically, this just extends the current plan that we have now through 2050. The additional alternative is what's called the transit-focused growth. This is more compact growth focused on high-capacity transit areas, so those HCT areas in the metropolitan core communities, so less growth in outlying areas. And then third is what they're calling a reset urban growth. This is growth that's really distributed throughout the urban growth area, while still assuming that a large share of that growth, of course, will happen in the metropolitan and core cities. So basically, this is where you're starting to see perhaps a consideration of growth in unincorporated areas of the four counties that this represents. More information can be found at their website regarding the alternative. Staff, of course, will take some time to review the draft and probably provide some comments, more technical regarding, obviously, very concerned about the growth and the impact that growth will have on the city's infrastructure, and of course, our ability to provide services. So most in line, our comments will be most in line with that. We are looking at seeing if we can really launch a Let's Talk page so we can collect comments on behalf of our residents and also submit those to PSRC. So we would love to hear what our community's saying about this. But, of course, if the community would prefer just to submit those to PSRC, happy to do that. I think I will be talking with Evan and his team to better understand what would be kind of a greater process that we might engage the community, planning commission, the council on. This is just the beginning. It's my understanding the PSRC will look to adopt a plan in 2020. The council, I believe we have this on our work plan, which we're gonna discuss in a few items later, is looking at, I believe, in 20, most likely, 2021, having us kick off and launch our comp plan update. But again, all of this will trickle, so I wanna work with Evan to provide kind of a sequential timeline so it all makes sense for the council and community. But wanted to alert the community about this now.
Julie, I think one important point here is there is a comment period now, and it's a total of, I believe, 60 days that goes through April 29. If I understand correctly, there is a second comment period that will be in July. So this isn't the only opportunity for citizens and/or the city to weigh in. So don't feel like this is very sudden and very rushed. While there's clearly a window right now, it is not the only window, and there's a lot that sits behind this, so.
Right.
I appreciate the call-out that staff will be providing, council and the community a path forward to better understand and obviously determine, you know, the extent to which we have individual and/or a city's perspective on these three options.
Right, and we may, I mean, this is again, I need to consult with Evan more about this. Like, when does it make sense for the city to weigh in before they actually adopt what is going to be part of the Vision 2050? So right now, they're just examining those alternatives. You probably have guessed, they're the bookings, you know, so kind of lesser to the most. And so that's what they're embarking on now, but I definitely wanna see where we can influence maybe the adoption of that plan. So, and Mayor and Council, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, great, Dave.
Question. Julie, I just wanted to follow up. So, just taking us back to the mini-planning session, I had made the proposal about funding the school mental health counselors or restoring funding for that, and it seemed like we had support for that. And I just didn't know if that was gonna come back to us on April 5 or the 26th meeting.
Yeah, I apologize for not really bringing this up sooner. Recall, you had your planning session on February 1 and 2. You directed staff at that time to find a way to provide that stopgap measure so that the biennial budget would include funding for those school counselors. We are scheduled to bring back some alternatives for you to look at. I was hoping sooner, but it looks like, I wanna talk to you later on this evening, but maybe April 30 looks like the next. I was hoping to time it with the fiscal sustainability plan that's scheduled for April 16, but running into some challenges with that. I need Cindy here, and unfortunately, she has another conflicting YFS event, so we're looking now, of course, if council is agreeable to this, on April 30. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think we'll be going through, and the planning schedule's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a longer conversation tonight than perhaps usual, but that's certainly something that will come back, because April 30 would be an additional meeting.
And my only worry about April 30 is we're getting close to the end of the school year, and I was hoping we could get some clarity sooner rather than later. So we'll talk about that later tonight.
Yeah, we're going to, we're just, we're running into availability issues in terms of the staff that we need here. So let's, Julie, I'd suggest, before we get into a deep conversation on this, maybe we just move it to the planning session, make sure we cover it to everybody's understanding and satisfaction. Okay, so with that, our next item on the agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak before council on any item. The usual rules, operate three minutes, generally stick to the issues, don't make it personal to individuals. Do we have anybody here for public appearances tonight? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, public appearances is closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar. I'm gonna call out that already, we've had two council members ask that we pull Agenda Bill 5541, that's Councilmember Andrel and Councilmember Wong. So the items on the consent calendar this evening are payables, payroll, minutes of March 5, 2019, regular meeting, AB 5542, Community Planning and Development Temporary Records Assistance Appropriation, and AB 5541, Due Diligence Costs for the Cities. No, that's actually the one that got pulled, sorry. So it would be those first four points, which are payables, payroll, minutes, and AB 5542. Is there a motion to accept consent calendar?
So, second.
First and second, did all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none is consent. So we have, we're gonna put Agenda Bill 5541 at the front of the regular business, and so for that, we have, who presenting?
I will, and of course, be supported by Carrie if need be, and Kirsten. So first of all, I just wanna thank councilmembers Wong and Andrel for alerting us well in advance so that I could actually prepare a PowerPoint. So thank you, it's really, I know, not always, you cannot, you know, sometimes it's not possible for you to alert me in advance, but I do really appreciate on behalf of staff being alerted in advance when you wanna pull something on consent. So, tonight before you, we are asking for an additional appropriation for due diligence and negotiations as part of the proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project. So council may recall, we have started incurring costs as part of the due diligence, really, when you initiated the approval of the purchase-and-sale agreement, which would have happened June of last year. So we've incurring some costs, and those are big numbers that you're seeing, so I'm not surprised that you were asking us for more information about this. As part of the due diligence, a significant body of work is really devoted to the environmental assessment of that site. So we embarked on a Phase 2 review of that site using a very reputable environmental firm, Aspect Environmental Consulting. Likewise, we have retained an environmental legal counsel with Martin Law Group. Group. And so, a significant amount of money is being used for that. The good news about that, anything related to the environmental, is recoverable. And we expect to receive 100% recoverable reimbursement of these fees, really through the known polluter, BP Arco. So, I feel pretty confident, I think Carrie feels pretty confident, that we'll be able to recover all of those costs that are related to the environmental assessment, future environmental cleanup. I wanted to mention some, obviously, you're apprised of this, but maybe the public's not aware, I've had a change in our negotiations team. And so, you're seeing some additional cost devoted to this. Our lead negotiator, we have retained Heartland LLC, Matt Anderson and Craig Johnson are our two negotiators. Likewise, we have retained Tom Brubaker with Lighthouse Law Group to assist and augment our legal team. And right now, we have scheduled for the negotiations team to come and meet with council on April 16th. Prior to that, Bob Stowe was our negotiator. He had to pull off the project for, let's see, when did he do that? I think towards the end of last year. And a couple of things that Bob was able to deliver on that I want to point out. Two purchase and sale agreements. So, one is with Parkway Group, which are the owners of the Tully's property. So, that's one purchase and sale agreement. Additionally, he was able to negotiate with Mr. Leon Khan for the sale, the city's selling of parcel 7. So, he negotiated those. Likewise, he prepared the RFQ that you approved, basically, last summer, and really helped us through the RFQ, the selection, the interview process that really helped us identify a developer partner. So, those were the deliverables that he helped us with. Other due diligence costs include, this is, of course, again, in the purchase and sale agreement, but rent to Parkway Management, survey and appraisal work, RFQ, advertising, open house costs, as well as some limited staff time that is also charged to this project. So, and a lot of these costs, we anticipate will be reimbursable, whether it's not, whether it's through BP Arco, the polluter, or, of course, Sound Transit as per the Sound Transit settlement agreement. To give you an idea of what the cost breakdown is, and you can hopefully see there, if you look at the top, the lion's share at the moment is really devoted to environmental. All the environmental work is very costly and pretty significant work. And then, finally, is negotiations, and that is bringing on Heartland. And then, of course, legal to help with the MOU and development agreement, some costs related to rent. And, of course, want to point out that some of that will be applied to the purchase price. And then, various professional services. And then, of course, some limited project management time as well. Let's see. So, as I've already mentioned, we anticipate due diligence and negotiation costs will be reimbursed. We consider all of those costs part of the total cost of constructing commuter parking. The environmental costs, as I mentioned, will be reimbursed by BP Arco. And, again, all the negotiation and other costs reimbursed by Sound Transit. And, let's see. So, what we are asking for you to approve this evening is a carryover of $64,162. And this is a carryover from the 2018 budget. And then, to appropriate an additional just under $305,000 from the contingency fund. And, of course, all those would be reimbursed by BP Arco or through the settlement funds. Next steps and a tentative timeline, I would like to have you meet the negotiation team and provide an MOU progress report to the council at an April 16 study session. And then, we have tentatively put on the planning schedule some MOU check-ins on May 21st and June 18th. So, with that, I will, if there are any questions from council.
Council, any questions? Lisa?
Thanks, Julie. Just so that I understand the line items, the environmental work, that includes the legal environmental?
Yes.
Okay.
Legal counsel is part of the environmental work.
Right, okay. Because there's another line item for legal, but that's for, that, the legal MOU and development agreement, that's going to be what's anticipated to be paid to Tom Brubaker?
Yes, yes.
And then, the rent to Parkway Management, that is, what is that?
So, before, of course, it was vacated, they had actually rental income on the property. And so, that was something they negotiated with the city, was to continue to collect some rental income on the property. Of course, we negotiated that we expect some of that rental income to be applied to the purchase price.
And then...
And, oh, I should mention, I don't know, I think the council's aware of this. We do have access to the property, not total access. We have access to the actual parking spaces, the parking lot to the property, not the building. And I am looking at how can we, I mean, figure out a way to provide parking that's a little more structured than what's out there right now. So, we're looking at that.
Well, wasn't Sound Transit supposed to rent commuter parking stalls for certain city Mercer Island residents? And so, could that, have we asked Sound Transit to pay for that?
That's right. And the council actually authorized the city to work with Sound Transit. I think it was a limited amount of about $70,000. As you can imagine, parking is really expensive. And so, they were not able to negotiate anything with that limited amount. We are talking to them. They do have conditions, and that might be the sticking point. So, that's why we're considering maybe some other option, maybe an app option where you can purchase time using your phone. So, that might be something we look at.
Couldn't we just extend in the interim, couldn't we extend the Mercer Island downtown parking permit to that lot?
Yes.
Because, I mean, people can, Mercer Island residents, so that would be check one, can simply go get a very inexpensive permit at town, at City Hall, check two, and then immediately be able to start enforcing that along with the other parking in the town center.
Yeah, we definitely could do that. I think you would have to, there is a legal, I think you have to amend your ordinance on that. So, it's a little bit more of a process. And the other piece I really need to sort out is the enforcement side. So, we are looking at all those things. I've recently tasked Jessie Bond, who just returned from maternity leave, to take on this project. And she pleases me by saying, yes, she will.
What a great re-entry. Okay. So, we'll hear back from you soon about the different parking options.
I would like to bring something back soon.
Okay, great. Benson, I think you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. And thanks for the additional information, Julie. In the Agenda Bill, I mean, obviously, we're looking down the road for reimbursement from either BP Arco or perhaps from Sound Transit. In the interim, your Agenda Bill basically references the contingency fund.
Fund.
Can you just elaborate on that and, obviously, how that's going to carry us from here to the time of the ultimate reimbursement? And how does that all work?
I mean, really, we're using the contingency fund kind of as visioned. We are seeing this unforeseen cost come about, and we have a plan to repay it through the reimbursement through Sound Transit. So, obviously, we will want to talk with council about this going forward, especially if we have to draw down more on the contingency fund. But, I know we have Chip scheduled to come to council on April 2nd to talk about the additional 1.2 million. Recall, right now, we are deficit spending, and you have directed us to do less of that. And as a result of that, what that would mean is you would end up being able to build up a little bit more into your contingency fund as a result of that. But, you haven't formally acted on that. And that's what's scheduled for April 2nd.
Counsel, Selim?
So, without straying too far off the rails, I wanted to see if you could explain to the community the risk of this not being reimbursable. So, we know that if we close the transaction, if we develop parking on the Tully's site in the adjacent parcel, that there are a number of mechanisms to get this reimbursed. I guess I would just like to convey to the community that we have discussed this, we've thought about this, we're not blind to the fact that this thing could die on the vine. I just want you to elaborate on that.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Neese. I'll try to answer that question. We have absolutely been considering and factoring in the potential risk of not getting reimbursement. With regard to cleanup of the site, we are fairly confident that we will get reimbursement of that through the known polluter of the site, BP Arco. Those negotiations are well underway. And I can report right now that they seem to be on track. It may take longer than we anticipated, these things often do. But, they do seem to be trending favorably at the moment. With regard to the portion of these expenditures that we expect to be reimbursed by Sound Transit through operation of the settlement agreement, the city does have some appreciable risk there insofar as if we do not construct net new parking, then we will not be eligible for reimbursement pursuant to the terms of the settlement agreement. Obviously, the goal has always been to maximize the amount of long-term commuter parking that we're able to provide the community. In our view, the worst-case scenario would be acquisition of this property and surface parking on the lot. Frankly, that's a worst-case scenario. We don't necessarily like how the cost per stall would play out in that worst-case scenario. That is not our objective. But, that would generate net new parking, and that would satisfy the terms of the settlement agreement as far as reimbursement goes. Again, that's not our objective. That's not our primary goal. We want to get many more parking stalls.
And I would assume that we would leave that property intact for future councils to hopefully optimize in a better way. That wouldn't be the...
That would not be the end result, we would hope. It would just be perhaps interim, and it would just take us longer to achieve the optimal number that we've always been trying to achieve as our objective. Again, that's a worst-case scenario, and that would still be short-term. That would not be the ultimate outcome from the city's perspective. So, I appreciate the question because we are very aware and appreciate the risk. There's risk on both sides. There's risk for our development partner here, our private development partner. There's risk for MICA, for everyone involved in this project. And we understand that, and we are trying to manage it as effectively as possible.
And so, just as a quick follow-up to that, I think it's fair to say that the appropriation and the size of the appropriation should be a reflection of the amount of diligence that's going into that decision. And the fact that we're still moving forward should give the public good confidence that we don't see the risk in not getting reimbursed.
We agree with that.
Counsel, any further questions? If not, I'd welcome a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager intern to a professional services agreement with Heartland Consulting LLC to provide the evaluation, engagement, and forthcoming negotiations work associated with developing a memorandum of understanding with Main Street Property Group LLC. And, can I do two at once?
Sorry?
Two at once, okay. And I move to transfer $304,838,000 from the contingency fund to the Town Center Parking Facilities Fund and appropriate 304-838 for additional due diligence negotiating costs related to the city's proposed commuter parking project, which will be reimbursed by Sound Transit when the project is constructed.
Second. Person second. Any discussion?
Um, yeah. I guess, I just kind of wanted to say that I, when first asked to pull this off the agenda, I was concerned about the large chunk of money, kind of all at once, and seemingly without a schedule for checkbacks or check-ins. And so, but, I feel better now seeing the breakout. And I'm still a little worried about expenditures that take the Sound Transit dollars and don't actually buy asphalt and re-park with that money. And so, I am still just kind of, I'm choking pretty hard on $135,000 for the negotiation costs. The environmental stuff no longer really concerns me after the discussion tonight. But, I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but that's where I am.
I was just going to say, this is all expensive. You're a lawyer, and this is really important to get it right. And as much as I adore Carrie, it's not her area of expertise to drill down this far. And I know we're paying top dollar, but we're also getting top service. So, I know it hurts, and especially with fiscal constraints being what they are. But, this legacy project requires this level of due diligence. So, I'm supportive.
I'll just chime in. I mean, it is expensive. I mean, nobody likes to really pay this amount of money. But, I think in conversations with the city manager, they know that they need to ride herd on the consultants and the attorneys. And there'll be, hopefully, a lot of check-ins there to make sure that the consultants and the attorneys don't go off the rails and go beyond what their scope of work is. And so, I'm willing to, you know, it is a complicated project. And so, that's why it needs to have all these various consultants. So, I'm in favor, I'll vote for it. But, I, you know, I understand the cost that's involved. And hate to see us use the contingency funds for the contingency fund, but have some assurance that it will get reimbursed. So, I'm willing to go forward.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 7-0. Great, thank you. And thank you again for the good conversation. I think that that was moving, at least us and the community, forward in terms of understanding how all the monies are being distributed. So, with that, we now move on to the, what would now be the, I'm trying to figure if it's the second or the third actual item of regular business. And that would be Agenda Bill 5539, Fiscal Sustainability Plan Progress Report. And for that, I am welcoming city manager Julie Underwood and Chip Quarter.
Actually, I'll take it. This is really an attempt to try, and hopefully, it will work. Steve Tiller, he is with Management Partners. He is our consultant, helping us prepare the fiscal sustainability plan. Recall, back at the end of last year, the council directed staff to work on this. And really, you're trying to find a way for the city to maintain services over, really, over a six and six-to-10-year period. So, Steve has prepared for you a progress report. We're currently still on track to have him deliver the, really, the scenarios related to the plan to the council on April 16th. So, hopefully, we can get him. He was double-booked, so...
Hi, Steve.
Yay. Steve, hi. It's Julie Underwood with the City of Mercer Island. Are you ready to present to us?
I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, I think so. I think, yep, I'm getting thumbs up. You are, you're plugged in. You're ready. And we've got you on the screen there.
Thank you, everybody. I apologize for not being able to be there live and in person. But, I'm, I'm watching your YouTube stream, so I feel like I'm going to throw my [inaudible]. Tonight, I wanted to just give you a brief update on the [inaudible] sustainability camp [inaudible] project that we're doing. [inaudible] President and I [inaudible] will be in with you live and in person on April 16th to go over the fruits of our labor of the analysis. person on April 16th to go over the fruits of our labor of the analysis today. So, I'll just give you a brief update, and what I thought I would do is just briefly start, I want to make sure you're able to do my...
You okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Great, good. Just as a recap, a refresher for everybody that's in the room, including members of the public that may be watching this, we've been charged with helping the city put together a fiscal sustainability plan that basically ends up being a set of fiscal policies and strategies in order to ensure that the city maintains its fiscal health on the long term. And we're doing that by customizing, really, the analysis that we've done that will be directly pertinent to Mercer Island and the opportunities that may be there. And the analysis that we're doing of each of the strategies will take a look at not only the fiscal impact, but also the potential feasibility of implementation of the various strategies. And this graphic that you see on this page here, again, as a way of reminder, we're gonna be assembling the strategies in the four different areas that deal with, from left to right, expenditure controls and cost shifts, service delivery alternatives, and revenue enhancements. Those three items seek to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible, and only to the extent that the combination of those three are either not exercised or not feasible, don't, you know, come to fruition as expected, then there may be the need to identify service level reductions. And so, we'll be going over that with you on April 16th as part of our analysis. This is a graphic that basically shows our project approach. You've seen this before. We have completed the first four items on this, and we've completed pretty much our analysis, and all we're doing right now is wrapping up our project report that we will be sharing and discussing with you on April 16th, which you will be getting, of course, in advance. And the other two elements I wanted to just briefly, we'll chat about tonight, is, number one, is the concept of conducting some community engagement as part of that, and whether that involves us or not, we can talk about that. As well, then, we will be alongside you in helping to support your implementation of finalizing the fiscal sustainability plan. That would necessarily mean that we will be helping you implement different strategies, but we will be providing some support to you and to staff as you move forward. So, what I wanted to do tonight is just kind of prepare you a little bit for the April 16th discussion that we intend to have you will have. We're calling a budget strategy memorandum, a thorough report, that will incorporate four different items in there for you, quite a few items, actually, but four different areas. First is that we have done some research on different, we worked with staff on identifying some comparative peer agencies to really identify, you know, revenue expenditure trends of those other agencies that would be comparable, to which we can compare Mercer Island against some of those agencies. We will then, you'll see the fruits of our labor in terms of the analysis that we've done for the various strategies. Each strategy will have an analysis in it, and the strategies that we will be using are those that, and identify those that really have the greatest possibility for success. And I'll talk about that in a little bit here. For each strategy, we'll identify then, kind of conduct a feasibility analysis of each of those, and then ultimately, we are taking all of the strategies and identifying, based on the updated fiscal model and long-range forecast work that we've been doing, is identify a set of scenarios, budget strategy scenarios or packages that will kind of give you a different flavor of different options or menu choices, almost, of strategies that could work in providing fiscal sustainability for the city. We will then review those packages with you, and we will then, you know, take it on ourselves to help facilitate discussion and provide, you know, analysis to you as you talk through and see the different strategies and come up with perhaps maybe an initial preferred scenario of strategies that may want to be explored further. We talked a little bit about the last time that I met with you all about, you know, the criteria that we're using for feasibility, and so you'll see in the budget strategies, kind of our take on our independent analysis of the feasibility of those, using these factors that you see here on the screen. I won't delve into it much deeper tonight, but I just wanted to, again, you know, refresh your memory of some of the things that we've talked about in the past and preview of coming attractions when we meet on April 16th. What we've done is, and you'll see this in the report, is we've taken a look at all the different strategies. We've identified some preliminary estimates for, you know, the potential fiscal impact would be for the city. And we've kind of used this type of a, kind of quadrant analysis, if you will, where along the left-hand side, you see, we'll be looking at the difficulty of implementation using the feasibility criteria that we, that I just showed you. And then along the top is the potential annual fiscal impact to the city. And based on the baseline fiscal model that identified, you know, a growing structural deficit in the general fund that was likely going to grow and could grow as high as $7 million over the course of six years, we use that to stratify the different strategies. And so, we identified these three areas, these three tiers, from $75,000 up to $250,000 and then over that. And so, as you can see from this type of an analysis here, that if something has, you know, greater than $250,000 of annual fiscal impact, and there's minimal difficulty of implementation, other words, the criteria, and the feasibility looks pretty easy, that's your no-brainer, right? You move forward with that. Where it becomes a little bit more challenging is that you have items that are over $250,000, but as they start moving up in terms of difficulty, you start getting into some, you know, there's the potential of success where you might have to exercise some work to implement the strategy, up to potentially significant difficulty, and those are the areas where there might be some moderate potential of success. And success here is really defined as not the dollar mark, not the minimal difficulty level, but it's really the success in being able to address the fiscal gap, to provide fiscal sustainability for the city. So, we're using this type of an analysis that is guiding our review of the different strategies. I will let you know that it's part of the work that we've done in reviewing documents, interviews with council and staff members, and the research that we've done, that there are some areas that may have come up that might yield, you know, $25,000, $50,000. Given the magnitude of what we're trying to resolve here, we focused on those items that were of higher fiscal value. It doesn't mean that these were, and we're going to identify for you in this report all of the different ideas and strategies that we saw, and give you at least our sense of, you know, if some of those had potentially small fiscal impact. We'll be discussing and disclosing those in the report and the presentation that we provide. But, again, when you're trying to, forget the term, when you're trying to crack the net to $7.5 million, $7 million, we devoted most of our efforts towards those that were going to have a greater deal of success rather than those that may be $10,000, $15,000. And it doesn't mean that you don't want to move forward with those, it just means that when all is said and done, when you add all those up, it will have a pretty nominal impact, minor impact ultimately on the fiscal sustainability. So, again, you'll see this in the memorandum as we, and in our presentation when we meet with you next month. The scenario packages that I mentioned, again, you've seen this before, but by way of refreshing recollection here, we'll be painting these different scenarios that range on the left side from, you know, anything from strong revenue strategies with some expenditure reductions, all the way through the spectrum towards, you know, more expenditure savings, efficiency issues on that side. But, and then ultimately, there has to be a scenario that we paint that has some significant expenditure reduction. And so, you'll see how we've kind of, we're putting this together, and we'll go through it, we'll have time. And what we'll do is we'll also have that dashboard fiscal model that I showed you back, I guess you missed it with July last year, right? So that we can plug in the various strategies as we have that dialogue with you in terms of items that you might want to see and what impact does it have. So, you'll have that tool, and we'll be able to go through that together. Real quickly, I want to get into future steps, is that we will see you then on April 16th and review what we just talked about. This concept of community engagement, and I want to chat about that here in a second, and how that is done. Doesn't have to be decisions tonight, but I just want to prompt some thoughts on that as we approach April 16th. We will then finalize the fiscal sustainability plan. We can do that as early as June, but I think there needs to be some conversation about the community engagement component. And then, it's starting implementation of the fiscal sustainability plan, which can be done as, you know, as early as immediately upon adoption. Let me start to breathe in and talking about community engagement. And from our perspective and working with so many cities across the United States in fiscal sustainability planning, a lot of times, this is where, you know, fiscal sustainability plan is made or broken. And so, I think that it's really important, I know that there has been discussion about engaging the community in the plan. We're willing to work alongside you with that. Our proposal had included us conducting two workshops with community members, and so we're willing to assist you with that. But if the city also wants to kind of move forward with that, we're more than willing to just, you know, kind of be on the sidelines as you're doing that process so that we can listen to it, hear about it, and get informed about what the final fiscal sustainability plan needs to incorporate. But we really think that there's a great opportunity to be able to educate the community about the different strategies that are being identified, and this gives you, as the ultimate decision-makers, the ability to, you know, gain input into a final sustainability plan. So, with that, I will stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Steve. Counsel, questions? I see Selim, I see Dave Benson. We'll work our way down. Okay, so we're gonna start with Dave.
It's like I'm one every time tonight, it's perfect. Steve, thanks so much. Quick question for you, I think I've figured it out, but is if I go back to your checkerboard squares, which is the potential strategy for success, where you have the different ranges against the axis of difficulty of implementation, you with me?
Yep.
Okay.
I have it on the...
Okay, so, cool. And so, what I'm envisioning is that when you come back to us, you'll have a, your big bucket of ideas that will then be scattered throughout that bingo chart, and ideas will have different levels of viability and then different levels of financial impact, and that's how you matrix the broad swath of ideas that you have. Am I thinking about that correctly?
That is correct. You will see a summary matrix like this that you're seeing on the screen that will have the different strategies, kind of one-liners, the titles of them inside of it. And then, for each strategy, there is an analysis that we prepared that talks about the fiscal impact, the feasibility, and background information about it, which could also include, you know, some ideas about, you know, implementation concepts that you're going to have to consider to move forward with those items.
Okay, let me just clarify one thing, and then I'll let you answer, and I can be done. When you say that we're gonna, we're gonna put the strategy in the square, is that the overall strategies that we're picking from, or more tactical things like, to use a simple example, we'll stop mowing the grass, and that'll save us $50,000 or $100,000 a year? Are they...
Yeah, but, yeah, each strategy that I'm talking about is really each of those individual items, like, you know, stop mowing the grass, hold a bake sale, you know...
Yeah, okay.
Each of those individual strategies will be analyzed separately and then combined together in this matrix that ultimately will lead into a fiscal model that shows you if those ideas are implemented, what does that do to your... In one city situation, we held two parallel identical workshops, and these workshops are, they're not meetings to say, here's the plan, what do you think? It's more really engaging and trying to, you know, kind of play the role of sitting in your seat, and what would they do to, you know, to put the right type of strategies together. And so, that's what we did for one city. Another big city we did, what you were indicating, that Benson, is that we held our initial discussion and meeting with the community to educate them, get them, you know, up to speed on kind of where things are, because this community had not really done much of anything before we came onboard, other than that they realized that there was a big fiscal gap. So, we did that education piece, and then we did the same participants, then came back a couple, a month or two, I think it was, six weeks later, and then we facilitated dialogue with them to come up with a strategy, or at least to come up with those items that they felt had some merit for the city to move forward with. That information then goes back to the council that ultimately that needs to make the decision.
Benson, you good for now?
Not very...
For now? Okay, great. Lisa?
Hi, Steve. I have questions along the lines of Benson's theme, I guess, which is community involvement. Do you guys have any sort of tools that you can engage the community on an online basis, a survey or anything like that that has worked in the past? Because, you know, it's hard for people to carve time out of their lives to attend study sessions, et cetera. So, is there kind of some sort of an open survey where we could get feedback over the course of, you know, a week or 10 days?
Well, yeah, you know, we, in our proposal, we did not identify and do an online survey, but we have done that for several agencies, in fact, I'm right next door to one that we just did some work for there, where we used an online tool to be able to get some engagement from people about what their ideas were. That then helped formulate for the council some different strategies for them to think about. So, we have done and would be willing to help you with doing an online survey. We can administer that if that's something that you're interested in, but we can also provide you with, you know, samples of what we've done in other communities that the city wanted to move forward with that themselves.
Thanks, thanks.
Great, Wendy?
So, thank you for this framework. I'm curious how closely you're working with Chip and Julie on feasibility and pain points. And I know you color-chatted this chart, and I know we have this project approach, but I guess I'm looking for more information about how closely you're working with staff versus how much you're looking at other jurisdictions in your history to sort of put the details to paper. So, when we look at it and council starts doing the trade-off game that we do, what's really gonna come out at the end is gonna be something that's gonna work for the city management administrative work as well as for... the city management administrative work as well as for our community and saving money at the end of the day.
Forgive me, Wendy, I kind of missed some of that. It broke up a little bit. I apologize.
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right. So my bottom line question is integration with your work and analysis and comparing us to other cities with working with Julie and Chip on, on the real impacts, not only to service levels but cost savings. So when we get this specific list of cuts and trade-offs and pain points and timelines that we'll really be able to come up with something that's gonna work. So I don't know if this is a question more for Julie and Chip or if you want to try to take a stab at how integrated and closely you're working with city staff who are experts and how this could actually work versus what's gonna be kind of a framework and ideals at the end of the day.
And Steve, I can-
Yeah, so we have, we've been working with city staff and just checking some assumptions that we have and cost information or revenue information to get that. Ultimately, the analysis that we're doing, you know, is our own analysis, it's independent of rural city. We will own this analysis. But we do have to rely on staff to give us some information about initially about what their perspectives are in terms of, some of the drivers that we need to at least consider. And also, we're going back to the conversations that I had with each of you about some of that as well. So it's a combination of being able to work with staff, understanding kind of what their perspectives are on the information that we need. But then also, you know, seeing how does this work in other communities based on our experience? What do we think is going to work? And also the work that you have done as a city over the last year plus or so in this area with the, with the advisory committee that you had. So we're, so hopefully that answers your question, Wendy.
Yeah, so as a follow-up, we, our IT director just left. And so we have that open position and we have another director kind of supervising that staff. So I'm wondering if, if that kind of new information changes your, your framework or if you're creating a framework and as things change, we can sort of move things in and out of the framework as well?
Right, yeah, yeah. And yeah, we'll need to, you know, as we go through this, if there's new information that we have, we're gonna have to refine it as we go. So, but we're giving you the best of our current analysis of what we know.
Great, Steve. So this is Debbie. I wanted to build off, you know, your, your high-level description of the community engagement as well as Lisa's point. And that is, one of the things that's intriguing to me is given your remoteness, your literal remoteness, in combination with the fact that we have a community that's probably at different points in terms of familiarity and understanding of what it is we're going through, I guess it's a statement slash question that is the extent to which when we build out this community engagement, which there must be in some shape or form, how much do you, do you have a sense of how much we could do virtually through virtual town halls, through online surveys, et cetera? And then making sure that when you and the management partners team are here locally, you know, we've got the biggest impact possible. Have you done any sort of community engagement that's been balanced between the virtual and the in-person?
So was that, sorry Debbie, was that a question about the type of engagement that we've had to give you some of our examples about? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, have you ever done a blend of community engagement that's both virtual, which would mean perhaps a virtual town hall and some survey work? Let's Talk, which is an online tool we have? And then combine that with an actual, you know, physical meeting where people can, you know, real-time ask questions or there's a, you know, more of the face-to-face type situation? Have you done a blend of those before?
Yeah, you know, I mean, we've, we've done both the, you know, the physical meeting as well as the remote, online interface. And I think that the communities that we've seen, you know, I think that, again, it somewhat depends on each community, but I'll tell you that the, the more opportunities that you have, you know, for, you know, engagement in front of folks, I think is going to add much more value ultimately. But, you know, each community kind of sets it up a little differently. You know, we, you can, you know, do anything from a town hall meeting, which is just kind of like an all-call, to really, you know, identifying key stakeholders to provide some input. And so there's some different options that we have and I'm willing to work with you in identifying, you know, what the different options are that, that should be addressed. I could even put together a quick white paper for you to give you an idea of how we've done that. Does that address your question, Debbie?
Yeah, I think that's great. And I guess the, the ultimate question is by when, by when do we need to provide feedback to management partners about the type of, you know, assistance that we want? I know we don't have to make it, that decision tonight, but I suspect it's pretty soon.
So let me jump to this one. You know, I think, as you'll see in our analysis, the clock is ticking not in terms of our contract, the clock is ticking on the fiscal sustainability plan. And I think that by 2021, you need to have some things in place. And there's gotta be some time for them to do that. So looking at it from that perspective and moving backwards, if the community engagement even happened over the next four to six months, let me just say that for, as an example, you know, we would still, you know, be, be happy to help you as you have, as you'd like, you know, even if that means that the fiscal sustainability plan isn't finalized until either late 2019 or early 2020. So we're willing to, you know, work with you and, you know, change our approach to meet your timing needs. But I think that, you know, it definitely behooves you to have, you know, we'll do it April 16th and then maybe we say, okay, what makes the most sense in terms of the timing and the approach to community engagement?
Great, thank you. Council, any further questions? Do we want to do another round down the line? Dave, do you have any more?
I have a comment.
Go for it. So we have Bruce?
So I would suggest in terms of this public engagement, clearly, in my opinion, we are going to want to have some robust public engagement. But I think the question, in my mind, is still open as to what that should look like. And what I would suggest we would do is on April 16th, we would ask that both the strategies, this whole package of material be presented, but additionally that Steve come with a bit more meat on the bones of different scenarios for public engagement that they have employed in the past and how those have worked. So this, this idea of put the citizens in the council member seats, it's intriguing. Let's, let's understand how did that actually work? And so on with, with the other ideas that he considers viable. And then we can pick and choose, and it's, it's not just pick and choose from the ideas, but it's pick and choose from whether we take those on ourselves or whether we have management partners involved in doing, you know, or, or have them, you know, take it entirely because we don't feel like we've got the bandwidth to, to run it. So at that point, we would sort of have that full range of, of options before us and we could have a reasonable discussion and come up with a plan for going forward from there. I, I like the idea of, I mean, there was, you know, this, this sense of we could be done with this by June. I don't see a need to rush to that because this is something that's going to extend over the course of years. The, the things that we're gonna undertake within it are lengthy, big things. And we really do want to have the public look at this from all sides and try and get to the sense of what, what really makes sense. I mean, this is about building a, a shared sense of vision for, for what's happening here in the city. And that's not gonna happen quickly. I think it's gonna happen over the course of, of some time. So I, my inclination is to, is to use this April 16th as a, as a, a starting point for that discussion and, and the beginnings of a launch into a, a public engagement process that, that will take, will have multiple touches and take some time.
Great, thanks. Saleem?
So the only thing I might add in that public engagement is that there's, there's this citizen advisory group that was highly educated, is a pretty good cross-section, it's about 30 people.
Do you think they're coming back?
No, I don't think they're coming-
They're not coming back.
I don't think they're coming back. But I do think from a public engagement perspective and given the emphasis of what we're trying to do, which is different than the discussion they kind of took in, but given their level of education of city finances, it's something that I would look toward to see, is there an opportunity to maybe do a small workshop with the ones that want to participate? And, you know, if they want to try on sitting in these seats and they have some ideas, I'd be open to that.
Great, Benson?
Nothing really more to add. I think Councilmember Bassett just really said it quite eloquently. I think that's the direction that I would certainly support, directing staff perhaps to work between now and the 16th with Steve to really flesh out the different ways that, different possibilities of how to engage this public, the community. We know that it's a highly educated, highly engaged, highly opinionated community and we need to basically walk with them and that we need to hear them. And so I certainly am wholehearted in support of a public engagement process. And I also agree, I also agree with Councilmember Bassett. I don't want to be tied to some sort of artificial deadline. You gotta get it right. If it takes a little bit longer, then that's the way it's gonna be. But also recognize the need that we do have to have something in place well before the end of the biennial budget so we can adopt the necessary policies going forward.
Lisa?
Yeah, thanks. I did have one other thing. And Steve, this is kind of a question for you, if you can give us some guidance on it. But I have been talking to Julie about when we will see the final 2018 financial numbers, when we will see our final city results. And I've been a little frustrated candidly, and I know everybody's busy, but a little frustrated with the fact that we're not gonna see them until May because it feels like that is the very linchpin of what we have to use, which is our current financial information, to decide how to go forward and also to see on an ongoing basis how anything we do is working or not. You need revenues and you need expenses and you need to know what the final numbers were and how they compare to forecasts. So is there anything you can tell us in terms of your work up with other cities on what, and what informs you there in terms of what's realistic for the council to expect to be getting regular financial updates on what sort of a timeline so that we have reasonably current information to go forward on?
Yeah, the, you know, again, we've done a lot of work with, with other cities and I've worked for a few of them as well. You know, I think that, you know, the timeframe to do a UN close, you know, does have some implications in terms of, you know, what is the staffing level, sort of the complexity of the revenue collection and, you know, competing priorities that are always a battle. But by and large, you know, in our experience, you know, anywhere from 60 to 90 days after fiscal year-end is typically the timeframe that a city is able to, to close its book. Some cities are able to do it much faster because they put a lot of effort towards it, they have high levels of finance staffing, you know, to be able to do that work. You know, in other cases, it may take a little while longer. I think there's some practical implications about revenues that come in. You know, as you probably know, you know, your, your sales tax monies come in a little bit delayed, they're more on a 60, you know, day delay. And so those have to be taken into consideration as well. But I think, you know, what we typically see is anywhere from about a 60 to 90 day timeline where the preliminary is done. Now, of course, that's different than, you know, final audit results because, you know, audits are typically not done until like, you know, three to five months out from, you know, fiscal year-end. And so you may not have final audit results until, you know, in your case, May or even June timeframe. But in our experience, we've typically seen about a two or three month window where at least some preliminary results are available. Does that answer your question, Lisa?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, Wendy?
Yeah, so Steve, I'm looking at the budget scenario package examples. Would it be helpful for you, for this body to give you, we like scenario two over scenario four, or do you not really need that? It seems to me if we could have you focus on the one or two that we're most interested in, it will have you not have to waste too much time on the one or two that we're not. But what's-
You're talking about this slide right here, Wendy?
Yes. So I know which one or two I'd prefer, but I don't need you to do a whole bunch of work on number one, for example, because I think the levy vote told us that's not really viable. So would it help for you to know that most of us are leaning towards two or three or four or not? Or are you gonna do all that work anyway and present it and let us hammer it out later?
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, I, I think that there, we've, we've seen that there's value in at least understanding what the, what the spectrum of options might be. You know, in some communities that the community may not want to move forward or may not be doable to move forward with either, you know, some revenue enhancements or even, you know, service delivery changes, we think that it's at least gotta be addressed in terms of what service level reduction with the impacts might be of that. I think it needs to be understood. And so that's just been our experience and, you know, we take it with a grain of salt about, you know, you think, okay, this is not doable. And that's fine. And we'd love to, you know, hear that from the council and really more focus on scenarios one through three. But I think that it's important to at least understand what, what does a strong, you know, heavily reliant on expenditure reductions look like.
So you're fine doing all four?
We're gonna be giving you four different strategies, you know, and there's, yeah, there's, there's one that we're at least creating that, you know, shows what, what does it look like if we have to rely on expenditure cuts and what are the impacts of that?
Okay, so I'm most interested in two and three if you're taking the polls.
Sure, okay.
Dave?
Yeah, I think that comment presupposes that there is some consensus about what all of us wants and I don't, I don't know that there is. And I think we can't preclude the public process of going through the whole thing. So I think we shouldn't constrain the effort on the front end. Let, let the work that we've already scoped complete and then we can decide where, where each of us falls once it's done.
I guess my only question is actually to you, Steve and Julie, insofar as do you have what you need from council tonight? How else can we help?
Yes, Mayor. I, it sounds like, please, we're not, we're not to do. I definitely heard from two council members tonight come back, work with Steve, come back with really kind of some options regarding community engagement, come prepared on the 16th for that discussion with the council. So is that, I'm seeing, okay, great.
Seeing some nods from people.
Seeing all of you support that idea. So I'll work with Steve and of course our internal communications engagement staff on how we might approach that. And Steve, if we can also maybe talk timing and that sort of thing too. So we'll follow up with, with Steve and prepare for that for the 16th.
Super. Great, okay. With that, I believe we are moving on to our, yeah?
Before we go, I just want to note, thank you to staff for making the technology work here. I mean, it wasn't, I know this wasn't rocket science, but it worked and it allowed Steve to be at home and not charging us for flights and hotels and all those kinds of things. And I work, I think it worked great. So, yeah, so thank you all for making that happen.
Bravo, especially tonight.
Next time it'll be video copy thing.
Thank you, Steve, very much. I'll be talking to you soon.
Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thanks. Good night, Steve.
Okay. Hold out priority for the next two years. Also, we added a section about communications and engagement focusing on that. The community survey noted that the residents liked the city to emphasize efforts to keep them informed and more public engagement on local decisions. And the council definitely set that as a priority for the next few years. So instead of making it its own priority and trying to run a list of all the things we can do, we have done an overarching focus on communications and engagement. And of course, it will be part of each of the items on this list.
And if I can add, council, one of the things that, we had a one-day retreat with the entire leadership team, which is really comprised of our department directors and a big element on the agenda was proactive communications. And, you know, there was a lot of energy around that topic. So I think you'll be pleased to see us, me really engage with our leadership team on kind of what that could look like. It'll be an expectation when I have my monthly meetings with each director that this is an element on their work plan. So I do think this is something, I'm hoping you'll be pleased with really the emphasis that we are going to be taking.
Great, thanks. So I think I'm, it's a general question to think for the room, Julie and Ellie in particular, and that is trying to keep council from going in and wordsmithing. Trying to... Trying very hard not to go in and wordsmith. How would you like us to proceed through this? Would you like to just go through them, priority one, two, and three, and just take high-level feedback?
Yeah, I think so. I do wanna recognize that Councilmember Wong did send a fair number of wordsmithing changes, which is just fine. He caught a few things that need to be clarified, so there are some substantive. So I'm gonna hope that we stick to the substantive and, you know, the final version we'll have. For example, whenever we say council, Councilmember Wong prefers it to say the city council, which I agree with. It makes it just a little bit clearer. We could be talking about the arts council, right? So there's a few little changes like that that are good to clean it up, but I think the substantive stuff we need to go through, so.
What about my comments? Were they not...
Yours were more substantive. Substantive, yes. This gets to be hard to say after a while.
I just wanted to make sure that actually I had sent them to the right people.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, council, I think we'll just, we're gonna start at the top and that is priority, and just so the public knows, this year we're not going through eight or nine or 10 or 11 or how many we had last year.
Three.
We're going through three, but we are equally aware of our ability to dive deeply into the minutia.
Mrs. Mayor, just a quick question of how to keep us on track best. What would you, what would you foresee a good review of a priority to look like and useful input from council members?
I would say if there is anything missing or anything that you are not comfortable having in there, that you speak up. If it's about the order of wording, if it's about changing words such as prepare to prevent or something like that, maybe we just offline let it roll.
And I just realized that the PowerPoint that I did very late today is incorrect. So I just brought up the actual document so we can make changes, although we don't like to do that. We're going to try that tonight and see if it works.
Do some real time. Yeah, just saying, the other thing too, where we got tangled up last year, if I recall correctly, is the text below the priority and then reviewing the action items. So when you reference, you know, changes or supplements, please articulate whether or not it's to the general principled statement or the action items below. So Saleem has offered to provide a best example, a best practice of how to do this. He just bailed. So, so Benson, do you wanna call out some of your substantive changes?
I think what we should do is, is there any changes to the italicized text under priority one?
The general description.
Besides the Scrivener changes.
Sadly, I had one change on the preamble.
Oh, up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
I did. Can I, and so I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, this is a draft, so we could easily, everybody could send in their comments, suggested changes, and you could come back with a revised draft and see how that resonates with people. That's a possibility.
That's a possibility. The other possibility is if there are not a lot of changes and everyone's in agreement, we could do it tonight also, but we are prepared to bring it back if needed.
Well, why don't we give it a go? Benson, you, you, give us an example of how...
All right, so I'll be very quickly and I think people have copies of it. It was sent out by Julie. But for instance, on the second paragraph of the preamble, I did not like and shrink its priorities. This is at the end of the second paragraph. And my proposal that I sent in was basically after the word focus, it would read, "to focus and allocate its limited resources to address the city's most pressing needs and the city council's highest priorities." That was my suggested change.
Council, any comment? Lisa, I see you're reaching.
I like it.
Good.
Can you read it one more time?
I'm sorry. Okay, I mean, you have it.
I know, I just wanna get it right.
Okay, so to focus and allocate its limited resources to address the city's most pressing needs and the city council's highest priorities.
I think you allocate its, ITS?
Uh, ITS.
Stop typing.
Okay, but I'm impressed with your typing.
Thank you. I don't know what happened.
Online, real time.
With a quill pen.
All right. And we can also, I mean, go clean it up.
No, no, it's, I got, I got three more. You know, I got one minute.
All right.
Next.
Great, so now we are in priority one in the italicized print.
Mm-hmm. I mean, did we get the priority right? I have to say I struggled with this one. So I did think it was about implementing the fiscal sustainability plan once the council sorts through what the plan is, implement it, and of course, ensure that it aligns with the community's priorities. So overarching, I saw that, but you, you know, I vacillated between implement and adopt, but I thought implement was more active, but, so that is something...
I would like to note that it is now staff that is going into the wordsmithing.
So noted.
Second, Deb to start the three-minute clock.
Yeah. She's got it going. Okay, back to the italicized, well, first, are people comfortable with the title of priority one?
Yes.
I like, I like it.
I agree with it.
Okay. Moving on to italicized print, anything there?
I would, I suggested after communities or after the word communities at the very end, that first paragraph, insert and city councils. So it's community and city councils priorities.
Hopefully they're aligned.
Yeah.
Well, you want them to be aligned.
Good with that?
Everybody good? I'm thinking Dave may be driving the rest of the meeting tonight. Happily.
Benson is like our John Hancock. They're both.
Okay. I actually had two additions to action items.
I have one.
Wendy, why don't you go ahead?
So I recall following up on Dave's point that we had made it a priority to figure out how to fund those MIYFS school counselors through the next biennium or beyond. So I'd like to see an action item up there that reflects that thumbs up that we had at the time. And here comes Bruce.
So that would be number eight?
I, I supported the idea of staff bringing back options for doing it, but we weren't at the point of agreeing to do it. And so having it as a priority option to do it, it goes beyond, I think, where we were as a council.
So I'm happy to concede that point, but I'd like to have that topic of discussion and deliberation somewhere on this list because it does reflect the community's priorities and the council's priorities. So however you wanna wordsmith that, Benson, is helpful.
Could you, well, couldn't you, couldn't you do something like add something to the number three and that says...
I like separate line items. Cause each one is crystal clear and I know Julie likes to check box off her to-do items.
Are we in agreement though?
I... Can you guys speak into the microphone so we can all, cause I think your conversation's relevant?
So these priorities take effect immediately or they take effect beginning of next year?
Immediately.
Immediately, okay. Yeah, that's why I didn't wanna say it in the microphone.
I mean, what I can say is the extent to which highlighting, putting the spotlight on YFS is consistent if I look at, for example, point four, point five, and point six. They're very specific categories. I, with that said, I would also agree with Bruce's point in that we agreed we wanted to review what our options were. I don't think we agreed that we would absolutely do it. So the extent to which we could even have staff, if we agree on those principles, we could have staff craft it and come back to us, or we can sit here and try to do it ourselves.
So it was my understanding at our retreat that we were gonna try to solve this problem for the next school year through 2020, this time next year, right? So did I recall that wrong?
Depending on the options that came back to us. I think we were waiting to see what options, Julie was tasked, if I understand correctly, to come back to us with different scenarios for achieving that.
And I understand there's some community resources out there that are willing to be part of that solution. So if we could put something on item eight that says we will examine or explore how to sustain MIYFS school-based mental health counselors, that's a priority for this biennium or this, this work plan for this time.
I think explore is a good...
So as a, as the proposer of that at the mini planning session, I couldn't agree with the idea more, but I think, I think they're right just procedurally. They're gonna come back with a, with a proposal or a couple of ways to go about it, and then it has to get voted on. And if it doesn't get voted on and agreed to, then it can't be a priority. So I think...
So, okay, pushing back. So here we are with the transportation impact fees, the sewer rate models, the 1.2 million and additional service level cuts. Those are very tactical, specific.
And they, yeah, they are, they're budget service packages. They're approved in the budget. That's why we called them out specifically because they are related to finances.
Right, and so are the school counselors.
These have been adopted in the 2019, 2020 biennium. The school counselors, as it stands right now, have the package that we're all struggling with, which is the reduction in service. So Dave, are you comfortable, Bruce, are you comfortable with this idea of exploring funding options?
That's fine. I just think we're gonna get to it faster than it's, like, I think we're gonna get to it right away.
I just like to see it on a list so it doesn't fall off somewhere in the process.
Like, if it can, but that's fine. That gets us done with this, that's fine. It's the same to me.
Bruce, any?
I go either way. To the extent that we're going to create a bullet here, I think that it's not unreasonable to then also speak to this idea of a community effort to find funding and the council's going to be, or the staff is going to be somehow supportive of that effort. So, I mean, there's a, there's a jumble of things going on right now around this idea of funding counselors. It's not clear what the path is. So the bullet, to me, feels as vague as recognize that there is some interest in this, both on the council and community, and support that discussion or, you know...
So how about a vague bullet point like explore community and city resources for MIYFS mental health counselors?
I'd support it.
Explore, right?
Explore, evaluate.
I had explore and support, different methods of, yeah, whatever.
So I don't sense we're ready to go to support yet, so I'm just happy to have it up there as explore community resources and I would say city and community resources. For MIYFS school counselors through the 2020, whatever.
Do you wanna limit it to counselors? Because obviously part of that community conversation is around, is it really as narrow as counselors or is it YFS or is it school stuff? And you're gonna, you're sort of putting your own English on it here in a way that might, you might regret doing if you do it here.
I regret a lot of things, but I will keep it narrow for the purposes of this because I understand the rest of it is part of the budget discussion. And my hope here for bullet eight is to try to capture what we had thumbs up for at the retreat, which included all the fiscal issues as well as the community priorities. And we had talked about public safety, right? And whether mental health counselors are in alignment with public safety. Some, you could argue yes or no either way, but I just wanna have it on the list so Julie can, explore is a pretty lightweight to have a checkbox and we can have that conversation in the next month or two. I'd love to have some sort of resolution and solution before the end of the school year because I think this community and our staff does, sort of, should have some expectation about what next school year looks like. So I'm happy to keep it vague and if you guys concur, I would love to see that on there as something that doesn't fall off our radar.
I think, for me, community resources for MIYFS services because it's not specific to the mental health school counselors because we're also depending on outside resources for half of Betsy Zuber, for some administrative support, et cetera.
And I don't think we got the thumbs up for that specific.
That's already, we've already got that in there, but there's, or there's a proposal for that. I'm trying to understand...
You, you might recall the foundation really felt it was a priority and so they funded the second half.
So that's fair money?
Yeah.
So they came up with that. So what I'm getting to is the mental health school-based counselors for the next school year as we continue down this fiscal responsibility path. So I'm happy to leave it at that. If you wanna open it up. Anybody else?
Benson, any?
No, I'm okay. I think, looking at this language, I mean, I'd support it.
So the only thing that is missing is it's, it's actually restoration of MIYFS mental health school. So we're not talking about creating something new, right? It's just the 15 months of programming, and that's really the way I think about it, is programming. You know, I know they are, they're MIYFS mental health, but it's, it's 15 months of youth...
So it's more restoration.
But it is definitely a restoration of those 15 months. And really, the impetus for it was to take pressure off a 19 levy discussion to allow the community to have a more thoughtful discussion about what is the future of YFS programming? What's the breadth of that social services department? And how do you get it right long-term? So, but, you know, Dave's point, we'll probably get that done before we get this done.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so council, is there a thumbs up for that language? Great.
Yep.
Benson, do you have anything?
Oh, more? Or no, I, no, not a priority one.
Okay, I actually have two that I would say it's not, you know, the height of intensity yet, I think is also reflective of what work is actually already underway. The first one, and please don't type this just yet, because I'd like to have a conversation about the viability of it, would read something along the lines of partner with community organizations and businesses to enrich the events, services, and programs in the community. The flavor of this being what we've already started to see, which is there's a number of events that this community has very much enjoyed, yet clearly we don't have the staffing or the one-time expenses to support. That could be the egg hunt, that could be the firehouse munch, et cetera. So the idea of helping or partnering with these community organizations to take on these events and calling that out. But it's sort of, it's a principled statement as much as it's a specific action. So I recognize the gray in there.
Yeah, I'd support that. That's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah.
So I've been doing a little bit of reviewing some old history and one of the things I come across is an effort back when we had our previous downturn, we asked the Parks Department to go find community funding for a number of different things. And what it turned into was a whole bunch of time spent by staff trying to figure out how to achieve that end. And it sort of defeated the purpose of it. It was $25,000, I think they were looking, 20, 20 or 25,000 they were looking for. And Bruce Fletcher ended up beating his head against the wall trying to figure out how to actually go and get that funding to resuscitate those programs. I'd suggest that we wanna be really careful about thinking that there are fixes for things that we're cutting that, that we, what we may end up finding is that we're tasking staff with new work that ends up defeating the purpose of cutting the thing in the first place. So I'm, I don't know how to re-craft or take care of that, but I, I'm concerned about this.
Well, that's, I'm not advocating that staff go out and try to find partners to do this or secure funding. What I'm trying to say is for staff to help facilitate the handover of some of these programs. And I mean, one of the examples that comes to mind is the ham radio team has expressed some interest in leading or, you know, I don't know what the right verb is, owning, managing, sponsoring, the firehouse munch. And so this is meant to be more of staff perhaps providing historic background, this is what we did, you know, and make the introductions to the team over at the fire department. That's the extent of what I'm looking for. This isn't meant to be a hold on to it, it isn't meant to be proactively go search out these people. meant to be proactively go search out these people and/or fundraise to support and sustain. Julie's got her hand up.
Yes, and I already know our Parks and Rec staff will be doing some of that. I do appreciate, though, Bruce pointing out, it can be a huge lift. However, I think we just don't have the bodies to do a huge lift. The other piece, I'm really hoping the staff, and again, I've talked to Jesse quite a bit about this, like, if there's already an event, maybe we're just sponsoring that. I mean, really excited to see, I know this year it got canceled because of the weather, but the other MICA, the Mercer Island Chinese Association, hosting a Lunar New Year event. Well, they are doing all the work, but maybe we can provide, for example, as part of our sponsorship, the space, you know, and again, we can advertise and promote. So I think there are other, maybe not, maybe it's some of the traditional events the city has provided, but maybe it's also a blend of some other events that the community is energized about and already hosting and putting together. Another good example is the Chambers Art and Cork. That's another great example, where they have it really well organized, and we do provide some support, I believe, some monetary funding for that, for them to provide, I think porta potties and fencing and that sort of thing. That's perfect. It's a great event for our community, and really, it did not cost a lot of taxpayer money. So, those are the kinds of things we're going to look at. So, it's technically great because it's already on our work plan.
So what's your net recommendation? Would you want to see something to this extent show up on the work plan or not?
Jesse, are you comfortable?
Yeah. Our suggestion is, instead of saying partner with, it would be some more, support community organizations and businesses in events and programming.
So not, making sure we're not in the lead role?
Yeah, and I think when you say partner with, it makes it sound like it's a 50/50, and it may not be that. But we would definitely support any organization that is taking on an event that we could help.
I liked what Debbie had in terms of the orderly transition. You know, these are established events. If you think about the car show that was part of summer celebration, the city being able to transfer the knowledge of what did they do to organize that, and then, to your point, maybe providing, you know, a free permit for the space to have the car show or whatever. But it's not the city performing, hosting the event, it's just the transition and then facilitation, right?
I just.
And we don't have to wordsmith that tonight. I think we can get that.
I think my only concern, I mean, I get the points that are being made, but we seem to be really getting too specific. I mean, it seems to me, the reason why we did the preamble was to capture all these things that we're not doing or can't do, and I think these action items are the ones that we want to really focus on. And I think that everything that people have said are important, but it seems like they're already happening. And so I guess, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to, if the majority of the council wants to be very specific and add these additional action items, that's fine. I just don't think it's necessary, personally. I think the preamble was intended to cover a lot of these things, the intent.
And yet, we just added.
No, I.
You know, so.
I'm worried about adding nine, 10, 11, 12, that's.
Well, and I guess, yeah, my question is, like, what are we trying to accomplish here? Because there's a lot of stuff that the city does every day that isn't on here, that's important. Send out water bills, you know, this kind of stuff. So.
To me, this was a call out in the context of transition, so supporting the transition or the handover, which would be unique to these two years. Like I said, I am not married to this, but to me, I do think that that's an important opportunity, perhaps?
And I think, I think a lot of it's happening. I mean, Jesse's team is working hard on a lot of it right now. So, I think that's good for you all to know, whether or not it comes, it lands in the priorities or not, but.
So, council, do any, I feel like we're kind of going back and forth, and I don't have a sense of whether we want this included in there or not.
I would personally like to see it in there. This is a one-time thing where these events that the community appreciates, which are all reflected in the preamble, have gone away. And having a strong statement about, we want these to transition to other organizations because we want the, the community wants the events to persist. Having it out there as an opportunity, I think is going to be important. Being silent to it and letting staff do it behind the scenes, I think is the wrong way to do it. If there are three people that want to host the car show, let them all come forward, and let's figure out, you know, how do you make that work? But I think that we need to be more public about it rather than just letting it be behind the scenes.
So, council, are we comfortable doing a thumbs up, thumbs down at this point?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thumbs up if you want to see it included, then, all right.
But let's use Ali's.
Included is a.
Words, you're just saying.
Staff is going to come back to us. I think, I'd like to think they've captured the spirit, which is more about support, transition.
Right, I'd like to see the wording done now so we don't have to come back to this. If we could close tonight.
Well, we are going to have to come back to it because we're not going to, this is a draft, and it could be on consent.
Okay.
Yeah, she can share it out. The other thing, which, you know, perhaps a little bit sensitive to right now, yes, I'm very proud, my daughter was a page in Olympia last week, and while I didn't go down there with the intention of spending much time, I was actually a little, a little bit surprised, but there was a lot of content that was happening down there with regard to legislation that could enhance and/or restrict cities' control, particularly over unfunded mandates. So it does tie back to the fiscal sustainability. So one of the questions would be, again, not something that's going to put a new set of responsibilities or accountabilities to staff, but this need to stay aware and generally advocate for statewide legislation that enhances local accountability and limits unfunded mandates. Maybe, again, this is addressed in our legislative priorities, but, you know, I just felt like there was a lot of bill, a lot of debate about stuff that was going to cost us money to go do without revenue sources. So that one, again, you know.
It happens all the time.
It seems to be pretty exceptional at this point, what I could, what I could take away, but, again, open.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it covered in our legislative, yeah, so I don't know if we need to add that.
Okay.
If that's the case.
All right, so we're going to take it as covered already. Super. So that's priority one, unless anybody else has some additional feedback. Okay, priority two, the title first. Prepare for light rail and improve on and off island mobility. Any concerns with the header? It's a continuation, okay. Bruce, is that you're okay, or you have a comment?
I'm okay with that.
I am now going to go to the italicized text. Go for it.
So, you'll recall that I made a case at the planning session for the idea that we should be thinking about having the termination date on our settlement funds extend beyond 2025, because in my opinion, we're going to have the potential to miss a real opportunity to have that money spread over a longer period of time. I know there wasn't support to go, there was not support to go to Sound Transit at this point and enter into a renegotiation of that. I'm fine with that. But to actually call it out as ending and got to spend it in the preamble here feels like it's sort of going the wrong direction rather than at least keeping open the concept. And so what I would like to see us do is somehow capture down in the action items probably, something that, and I remember there was talk, there was language that we were wrestling around with around, people didn't want to go have the negotiation, but they were open to the idea of programs or something like that. I'd like to see us capture that down in the action items and somehow reword this sentence up at the top, or scratch it, or do something. So, I, you know, I just think there's, there's going to come a time fairly soon where we're going to realize that we're, it's not clear that we need the full 10 million for concrete, and we are going to be left with this, are we just giving it back to Sound Transit, or are we trying to have a bigger vision of how we're getting people, mobility and access to transit here on the island? And I really think we need to be positioning ourselves for that rather than positioning ourselves to be blocked from that.
Well, I'm going to, I mean, what I remember is that there wasn't, I think there was understanding of where you were trying to go. There wasn't necessarily the understanding of the what? We were talking about the what, or the why, or the how, or something like that. So what we were anticipating was having more conversation. This was also linked to having the guiding principles behind the dispersment of the Sound Transit funds, which I think is something else that's coming back to us hopefully fairly soon. At this point, I'm, you know, I'm not absolutely closed to the idea, but I think I want us to have a little bit of feet to the fire, which is the agreement that we have right now is December 31st, 2025. And in keeping that forefront, unless we have a specific plan with reason and justification to take before Sound Transit. So to me, it feels like we're still a couple steps away from putting that into 2019, 20, arguably 2020 priorities.
So maybe it's as simple as adding in front of that, as the agreement currently stands, comma, and then the sentence that's there.
Or frankly, we could just remove the whole sentence.
You could. But.
I want to keep the deadline so we're all cognizant of that's it, unless it changes. And I'm only interested in changing it if there's a compelling set of tactics or something that you're alluding to but not getting to. So I'm not sure what you're thinking.
Well, I, we haven't developed.
I know we want flexibility.
We haven't developed the concept. So, there is no there there right now. There is just a very large bucket of money which is going to evaporate.
Right, and I'm afraid of going back now and saying we don't have a plan yet can give us more time because we don't have a plan.
I understand. But what I fear is that we do nothing with this and get closer to the 2025 and have done nothing to prepare for trying to transition that. And that will lead to a scramble and, I think, failure to achieve the change.
So, I don't see, can I speak up? So, I don't see any, I get your point, Bruce, I don't see any negative if we simply delete it, but I also, you know, it states what is factually.
It does.
It does. And so it's, it is part of the settlement agreement. So, I mean, it really, I know you seem to be concerned about calling attention to it, but it is what it is. But, you know, again, if the feeling is to take it out, I'm okay with that. And, you know, I don't know if this addresses your concern, but maybe throw in an action item, which I hate adding more action items, but explore the possibility of using the $10 million Sound Transit settlement funds beyond 12, 31, 20, and, no.
Because the council, the council didn't go there at the planning session, right?
Okay, that's fine, okay, and that's fine. I mean, I, I, I think we all realize we really don't want to open up negotiations with Sound Transit. They certainly don't want to.
I'm seeing staff kind of melt.
And they certainly have given no indication they want to do that with us either. So, okay, so scratch that out.
Well, no one's, no one's tried, right? No one's tried.
Well, nobody wants to.
I don't think anybody wants to.
We, I think where we left it was there, we didn't have a compelling reason to do so.
Right.
And until we had a compelling reason, which I think is building off what Wendy was saying, I'd.
So, maybe it's enough, leave it there, but add an action item, which is to begin to develop a scenario. I mean, you'd have to go back to the language that we, that we did agree to in the planning session, which had, it was an agreement around a system or a service or something like that. But I'd be fine with explore that, whatever it was.
I'm happy to add the, as the agreement stands, or currently stands, whatever that phrase was that you wanted to add, if that makes you happy and still leaves it clear that this is the deadline and we're working towards it with the pilots we've done and with the projects we have pending.
Yeah, that would be fine with me. Leaving it would be fine with me if we get the action item. I'd like to get the action item in either way, I guess.
But what's the action item?
It's capturing the language from the planning session, which I don't recall right now, which said, which said something to the effect of work on concepts for a system, mobility system, or something like that.
Is this the app you were getting at? You want to design an app or something?
Can I, can I ask a question?
It's much vaguer than that.
I don't remember what that action is, but I'm hearing a lot of passion coming from Bruce, just as he expressed a month or two ago. Is there another council member who feels very strongly about including this concept?
If there's no support, then it dies, that's.
I'm happy to add the phrase, I'm not keen on the action item.
Okay, so, right now, then, what we essentially have for discussion is adding some modification to the final sentence of the italicized section, which says, as it currently stands, the city has until December 31st, 2025, dot, 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 dot. I mean, that's off the top of my head.
It's a bit meaningless by itself, without some action item following it.
I think if we, because we have gone back to the transcript of the planning session for some other items, if we could just take the time between now and when this comes back to see what we decided on, you know, if we did talk about it and we had some consensus, I think it should come back to us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm willing to.
Let us find it and we'll bring it back.
So, a little bit of personal effort then that goes in from you, Bruce, working with staff to making sure somehow captured, because you were the super sponsor of that one. Okay, so that's the italicized section. Under the action items, I actually had additions to the existing action items. And the first one was on point number two, which is, and I'll read it out loud, as it exists, continue to advance two proposed commuter parking and mixed-use projects, parcel 12 Tully's and parcel seven Freshies. What I was interested in is adding something to the effect of remain vigilant for other public partner partnerships. And the reason I put that in there is these are, this is a two-year timeframe, and, you know, for all that we're doing tremendous due diligence on these projects, there is the potential that one or both of them could not come to fruition. And I would like us to be conscious about the fact that there may be other scenarios that develop instead of, I mean, you could say in addition to, but that'd be pretty remarkable. But, so, just remain vigilant for other public partner partnerships.
So, to me, it feels like the preamble addresses that, and they can't really make an action item out of it until something turns up.
Okay.
We're going to stay focused on the 10 million, the settlement, right, and deploying those dollars? And I think what you're saying is if another opportunity comes up, don't turn a blind eye to it because we've got two things on our plate.
Yeah.
But, you know, one could not flush out. So, I get what you're saying, but I don't think it's an action item until that kind of comes up.
Yeah, because remaining vigilant isn't kind of an action.
Okay, it's a state of mind?
Yeah.
State of awareness?
Exactly.
Okay. Again, this isn't, this isn't something I'm going to die on my sword about. The one thing that I did not see in here called out, which is, you know, goes back to a point that I made during the study session, would be something to the effect of safety. So, what has struck me throughout all of this is, I believe one of our top priorities should be safety, and that means pedestrian, bicycle, motorist safety. And whether or not that's an action or a guiding principle, I don't know, but when I'm looking at all of this, first and forefront of my mind is.
Councilmember Wong actually had a couple of really good edits. If you don't mind, I'll just type them in there.
You're really doing that judgment? Are you actually saying they were good?
They are. I get paid to say that. I'm just kidding.
I agree with you, you know. So I had to suggest a change on action item three.
Oh, safe and, I love it. Priority two?
Oh, you're actually typing the names?
Oh, because, because I had effective means to access and use the light rail. It sounds like Benson and I.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Because I put it.
I also had it in the action item, had some other line.
Okay.
You put safety in three?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I agree with you, it was missing. But I agree with you, it was missing. I think that's it for me.
OK. That's great. So it pops up into the italicized portion and we amend point three. Cancel, any, any comment, feedback? You've moved ahead. OK, but can we get your feedback? Is everybody comfortable with these amendments to priority two?
Yeah.
Thumbs up? Enough thumbs up, OK.
Are we done with priority two then? Because I don't want to leave it until I get to this.
OK, Lisa, you've got some more to add to priority two.
Well, I don't have anything to add necessarily. I was just questioning whether, after the presentation tonight, we want to look at the wording for action item five. I don't know. I mean, it's just, just.
So.
It's not decided what it's going to look like yet.
Well, it's funny because what I had put as notes to myself next to five was work with Sound Transit and Metro to implement the Mercer Island Transit Interchange in ways compatible with island priorities and the settlement agreement. But, I mean, I don't know if, A, that's consistent with what, where you were headed. Well, we have limited options on design. Let's, let's be super clear. I mean, we can, was it refine arguably? But we're not going to be designing per se. If you understand the distinction there.
Well, I mean, are we going to really be implementing it? They're going to be doing all the work, so. But I do, I did want to capture maybe that, you know, I feel like we still have input to give in terms of what configuration gets selected and.
So something in addition to implement?
So if you don't mind me piping in, I think that regardless of the final design and what options are chosen, it's still going to be called the Mercer Island Transit Interchange. So I think the intent of this was we're going to continue to work with Sound Transit and Metro to implement this interchange that's going to happen. I don't think it is meant to say what option has been chosen because it hasn't been finalized yet. That's just my two cents. It's not, it's a future.
Do you want to add the word final in front of Mercer Island Interchange? No, OK, I'm just throwing it out. Throw it back.
You're batting high right now.
No.
I'm good leaving it on. Just wanted to have a discussion about it, but I like kind of what you said. But I don't know how many thumbs you'd get on it.
What I hear Lisa saying, and I think it's a, it's a fair comment, is, is she's, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it feels like you're trying to sort of have an oversight rather than a implement authority, a cautionary sort of, we're looking out for the best interests of the community in doing this sense about this, which is not captured in just the word implement. So, and I'm OK with that as a concept. If you went further and said, you know, this might be about pushing it back entirely or things like that, that gets, that gets well beyond, I think, what our range of options is. But having some words that are a little bit more about an oversight or looking out for the best interests of the community as this gets done, I would be comfortable with. I don't know what those words are though, so I'd.
I like, I mean, I liked what Debbie just said. I thumbed up Debbie's extra words.
Lisa, I had, the other thing to change is, you know, work closely with Sound Transit and Metro on the implementation of the Mercer Island Transit Interchange. I think that takes away the strong to implement, like whose responsibility is it to implement? Is that kind of where you were going, Lisa, or?
No.
No, OK.
I think there, so what I had referenced was, you know, such that it's compatible with island priorities and the settlement agreement, period.
Does that imply an authority we don't have?
No, that's what it's compatible with. It has to be both of them. And again, it was kind of a note to myself in terms of thinking of it.
But I mean, it actually captures what I wanted to say that I didn't know that I wanted to say. I mean, because, you know, there's all this conversation about Metro not being bound by the settlement agreement, but Sound Transit is. And, you know, so I think there's still a kind of a tension there. And I think I like.
Councilmember Ackerman, excuse me, Councilmember Randrell, could I ask you to speak into your mic, please? Thank you.
OK. Yeah. I, like I said, I, I just want it to be tied to the settlement agreement and the, and the community's priorities in terms of how it, how it happens.
So actually, Deputy Mayor Neese made a good suggestion, changing compatible to consistent with, which I think is a good suggestion. In thinking about this, it's not only the what, it's the how. So we're adding the how to the statement. And.
I, I'm just going to plant the seed because I heard in the presentation, but I think we should rename that thing as quick as we can. They seem open to it. I mean, the technology station got renamed from Overlake, right? I mean, that's a horrible name for what we're going to have on the island for 20 years. Mercer Island Transit Interchange. No, we're talking about this interchange thing.
That's just the name of the project.
That's the project, not the station.
I hope they don't call it that.
It's the Mercer Island Station.
OK.
Big sign, since you've just arrived.
The interchange.
The interchange.
Well, would that change up? You want to take a thumbs up?
OK, so thumbs up for Bruce?
I fear that you are setting yourself up for a citizen outcry, that you've just assured people that what gets done will be exactly what was specified in the settlement, which we know that the optimal version of the interchange requires a couple of changes. So it feels like you've, you're, you're setting yourself up for a tussle.
I'm not sure I followed.
It says, consistent with the settlement agreement. And I mean, I get, you can look at it a couple of different ways. You can say yes, because the settlement agreement has the, the language in it that says Metro gets to say, this doesn't work as it is, we need to do something different. But the settlement agreement in its raw form, if you take that away, is saying you got to drop off on the south side. You can't have layovers except during peak hours in the afternoon. And I, I think there are those who will read that and say, well, fine. You've, you've written that, now accomplish that. No drop offs on the north side, no additional layover space, and so on. And you've just set yourself up for a fight. So that's, maybe I'm overly sensitive there, but that's a concern.
I mean, Bruce, I take your point because it, I mean, you can read it in a nuanced way to say that, you know, consistent with the settlement agreement includes King County's input, et cetera, et cetera. But what I, what I hear you saying is we may be appearing to promise something we can't specifically deliver.
You said it a lot more succinctly than I did. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm starting to sense there's the, there's the nuanced and then there's the legalistic.
Yeah.
I'm going to look at Lisa. How do you feel? Do we take it out? And know in our heart of hearts?
That that's what we're going to do?
That that's our intent? Benson, Benson.
No, I'm just thinking, actually, Ally's suggested change is, is a true statement. I mean, that we would work with Metro and Sound Transit in the implementation, whatever that is, I mean, whatever this thing is. I mean, that's a true statement, but I don't know if that goes far enough or, you know, whatever. But, you know, I think maybe that's the way to get us off this, this issue.
I'd support that too. I'd head back towards Ally's language.
Yeah, and then let's look at the draft when it comes back to us.
OK. Ally, do you remember your brilliance?
Yeah, I do.
You two, mutual admiration society.
You got a good thing going.
Oh, we were taking that out then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
I was advising taking it out.
Oh, I thought we were taking it out.
Oh, all right. Then I don't think we changed it.
OK, I think it's out.
Then it's redlined, but it's not different, but it's OK.
OK, that, that.
How's nine o'clock looking, Lisa?
It's great.
Did I say AM or PM?
It's nine o'clock somewhere else in the world.
That's right. Is there any, any other feedback on priority number two? Nope. OK, priority number three. Both in terms of title and then italic text.
I don't have any recommendations.
I'm good, to me, the only thing that I caught was this refers to over the next three years, when in essence this is a 2019, 2020, but.
We were trying to show you that some of this stuff goes on for a long time.
Yeah. The only suggestion I had is, is an option would be to maybe update the work plan. Because we know, that's a head spin.
Yeah, we have a, I put a date in the bottom corner so that we could do that. And I think we do know of a few changes. So when we bring back the final version, we can update those.
I only suggested a format change because I found it difficult to, I'm looking at the table as far as the projects. I mean, they're not, it's not alphabet, it's not in alphabetical order.
Yeah, there's a hidden, hidden column which we could put back in, which is by department, which department's in charge of it. So why don't we put that back in or put a numbering system on it? Would that, would that be helpful?
I just found it hard to figure out. I mean, if you're trying to figure out what project you're talking about, there's no, it's not in alphabetical.
It's the 13th line from the top. I'm a little snarky right now. I hear you, Councilmember Wong, and we will do something to make it stand out and number them or letter them.
All right. Dave, this is your chance to. You can either bring us up or bring us down. We're done, yeah, as I say, he could, he could. All right. So you're, Julie, Ally, I think we'll see another draft. And then do you anticipate it coming back for discussion or consent?
I would say consent if the council is OK with that.
Great.
We, we will send it one more time.
Bruce?
Yeah, I've just got one question. So it feels like there's a bit of a circularity here. I just want to clarify, at the bottom of the table, it says asterisk council priorities. So some of these are council priorities, but the topic is leadership team work plan.
Do you? What, what we're trying to say is those ones with the asterisk on it are actually specifically within the priorities above. Does that make sense?
Within priorities one and two.
One and two.
Oh, OK. So they land within the council's priorities.
OK.
I didn't hear. It's a little redundant, but provide some timeline for those.
Like I say, it just feels a little circular.
It is, yeah.
But that's, at the end of the day, it's OK.
You're right.
You, you don't like the hamster wheel?
OK. Are we, are we ready to lay this one to bed? OK, good. No, no, we don't. All right, other business, are there any upcoming council member absences? Other than as I believe currently documented in the planning calendar? All right, well, not a big deal. You can always come back to that one virtually as well. Planning schedule, I know we do have some stuff to talk about on the planning schedule. Someone hand it over to Julie?
Yes. OK, council, you, I, unfortunately, I will have to be absent on your April 2nd meeting. However, I've asked Jesse to stand in for me. So we have a study session, six to seven. I invited King County staff to talk about the proposed parks levy. And I know there's going to be some discussion tonight under council reports of that. I know that's something that Councilmember Wong is seeking council's direction on. So it is a little weird, except we're not prepared to go into the full depth of that until your April 2nd meeting. In addition, we have also added, I thought it would be helpful for Jesse to talk about the Parks and Rec Commission that you've established, the recruitment of that, and what we see as their work plan going forward. Also, in consultation with the mayor and deputy mayor, they have requested that we bring back your, you recall at your planning session, the reduce the deficit spending. So we're bringing that back on April 2nd for your review. And that is for the general fund only. I originally had the YFS fund being reviewed by you on April 2nd, I mean, I'm sorry, April 16th, along with the fiscal sustainability plan. But I know there is a YFS community meeting that night that Cindy has to be at. So she asked me if the council would consider April 30. I, I try very hard not to add more meetings to your calendar. April is in a particularly busy month for you. So I just wanted to poll you this evening to see. I promise you it will only be YFS fund on, on that meeting. I'm thinking a six o'clock start, since it's a special meeting, to hopefully get you in and out. But if the council's available, I'd like to add that to your planning schedule. And then possibly bring back the Mercer Island Interchange at some point in April. So I'll consult with staff and see what, what's possible to.
Bruce?
So if it doesn't fit on the 16th, that's fine. Why not put it on May 7th? A week, it's just a week later and.
Well, there's a lot on May 7th, so, but, you know.
That might be a good reason, but I.
That was the only reason, so, but we can talk about it. If you prefer to push, oh darn, Evan's not here. You have your, I was hoping to invite Arch to come for your study session on May 7th to provide an overview of their programming and some of the things they're doing to address, obviously, some of the challenges we have with regard to the affordable housing and oversight. You have a public hearing for your TIP, so that'll be a presentation, public hearing. I would like to include as part of, part of that discussion, remember bringing back those guiding principles that you weighed in on at your planning session regarding the settlement agreement. So ideally, I think it does marry well. I think the mayor had this idea for me, hey, why don't we put it as part of the TIP? So that's out there. You've got Chip delivering your year-end report. We've got your first reading on your critical areas ordinance. And then the code cleanup, that might be something I can talk to Evan about rescheduling. So it's a busy meeting already, so, but I, I'm, take your direction on how you want to handle that. We have, I mean, we have to do the TIP. And I'm confident you want to do the fourth quarter financial report, so.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm wondering if it may, if it works, what if we moved the April 16th meeting to the 23rd? It's the Aubrey Davis meeting that night. I thought you might want, some of you might want to attend that, so.
I didn't know that, yeah.
I thought about that, totally thought about that.
OK.
So.
I'm, I'm available on the 30th, I'll, I'll make the meeting.
Well, I realize it's an extra meeting. I do feel, you know, and I think this is a point Wendy was making both directly and indirectly earlier, the discussion around YFS and the councils is very important to the community. So the extent. So the extent to which it is the only item does put a very definite spotlight. Now, were we also going to have the team, Jody's team, come as well? Or is that still kind of a thinking?
I will want to consult with her on that. I know, as Cindy pointed out, of course, when the council has this item scheduled, the foundation board would want to be here for that, I'm confident. So whether or not, you might recall during your planning session, they requested some type of joint study session. I'm not sure they're really ready for that, so let me consult with her and find out what maybe...
I think what if anything.
What if anything. She could, maybe it's a status update or something.
Or even just making sure that, I mean, granted that everything is recorded, but the extent to which we're really going to put a spotlight on it, let's make sure we have the right people.
So our idea for discussing YFS funding was, you know, funding through the foundation, talk about funding through the thrift store, and talk about funding through the potential for billing and grants.
Okay. So, council, are people okay with the 30th? Or do you want to still try to do a little bit of... Okay, thumbs up for the 30th?
I have to move a thing.
You have to move a thing, but you're going to try to be here. Okay, great, alright. So we're seeing generally thumbs up, so April 30th. Keeping in mind also that week before that, we have a joint school board meeting. So it's going to be, April will be a busy month.
Good. To the... To me, there's no, others may disagree. There's no advantage to having, once you have a meeting, you might as well have a meeting rather than having a meeting and keeping it really short. So to the extent that you are feeling overloaded on May 7th, balance things out rather than feel obliged to keep a really tight, short meeting on the 30th and then have a really heavy meeting on the 7th. Again, that's just my opinion.
I like that idea.
I like that, too.
Deb has reminded me, last year's TIP discussion did go to midnight. So I will talk to staff. If you generally agree with what Bruce is saying, I'll talk to them and see if they can move it up, you know, a week.
I think that makes sense. I'd also just say, part of the TIP, if I recall last year, was we did get a little bit tangled up about what was Sound Means at Money and what wasn't, so...
Yes, to be fair.
If we can have that cleared up, that would help. Other items on the planning calendar? Julie, I think where, is this where, was it council member reports where we were going to talk about the King County Parks Levy? Is that reports? So we're not there just yet then, okay. So from a planning perspective, is there anything else anybody wants to call attention to? Alright, so with that, the next item on the agenda is board appointments. As you may have seen, we have the upcoming annual board recruitment process, which has, I believe, opened. And we have two positions on Arts Council, two positions on Design. There will be seven positions on the Parks and Recreation Committee newly formed, so encouraging everybody to stay tuned and participate in the April 2nd meeting, where we'll learn more about that. And then Planning Commission has two positions. Now, another reminder that there are incumbents who are eligible to renew, but they too need to apply, if I understand correctly. They need to notify us that they are interested in remaining.
Yes, they don't need to reapply, just let me know and...
Okay, so if you're an incumbent, please make sure you let Deb know that you are interested in continuing to serve. With that, then, council member reports. We're going to, actually, we started with Dave all night long, so we're going to start with Wendy.
Do you want to go first, Dave? King County Conservation District is meeting here tomorrow from 3:00 to 6:00. So thank you, Julie and staff, for making that work, because that's a central place for all the folks coming from the four corners of the county. There's an SCA dinner on April 3rd, hopefully some of us can go to that. And then Action Days on Monday with AWC. And then I also wanted to call out and shout out Chief Holmes for his article in the Mercer Island Reporter, is Mercer Island a Sanctuary City? And if I could just take a moment to highlight... Answer what? Yes, and he's so eloquent when he says, "For those who are trying to do right yet encounter difficult road on life's journey, we try to connect them with meaningful services. If however someone is victimizing our community, our officers are well-trained and well-equipped to enforce the laws to keep everyone safe." And he says, "I've learned that just because your views on a topic differ from those of your neighbor, it doesn't mean that one of you doesn't care. I've also learned that the truly wonderful people can have very different opinions on the same topic. Despite our differences, it's important to remember that there is much more that unites us than divides us."
Actually, the council's never taken an action on being a sanctuary city. However, I think what you're demonstrating is...
We're welcoming, we're exclusive. We have the principles of trying to do right by everybody in all situations of life. And our police chief is so eloquent, and I appreciate him for putting that out there in the world.
Great, thanks. Lisa?
No, since I was appointed as the liaison to the utility board, the only meeting they've had has been canceled.
If you need more meetings, I'm sure we have lots of suggestions.
I believe they will be meeting again in April, and so I will have a report after that.
Benson, would you mind if we have you go last, since we're going to have one of your reports? Saleem, anything? Bruce?
I just wrote a report I was in Olympia today, testifying on the Clean Fuel Standard Bill. Looks like it's got a bit of a tough road to follow, but we're working on it. And I got good news from Brian Emanuel's that a couple of other bills made progress today as well. So it seems, in general, it's a pretty good report out of Olympia, I think, on environmental issues this session. But vigilance is important and in order until these things actually get to the final vote and governor's signature.
Great. Dave? Okay. The only thing right now that I, well, a couple of things I'd call out. First of all, Mountains to Sound is having their breakfast on April 3rd. So anybody who's interested in that. The second thing is, our 41st District delegation is having a town hall this Saturday from 10, I think, until 12. I don't remember the location. I'm not sure, Julie, if you remember off the top of your head.
I believe it's Bellevue Community College.
I think you're right. I think it's Bellevue College.
I keep the same community.
And just given the amount of activity, again, down in Olympia, I would encourage, you know, those of you who are interested and passionate to go hear from them. Yeah, so I think that's it. So Benson?
Thank you. I'll keep this as brief as possible. And I apologize, I should have sent out the kind of the questions that the Public Issues Committee of the SCA is asking its PIC members to sort of opine on. So anyway, by way of quick background, this pertains to the proposed renewed parks levy by the King County. The current one is set to expire December 31, 2019. King County Executive Dow Con sting has proposed a ordinance to the King County Council and is proposing that the levy be on the August 6, 2019 ballot. The King County Council is expected to act on this proposed ordinance by the end of April. And so the proposed ordinance right now contemplates a six-year levy beginning 2020 that would raise $738 million over that period of time. And the money would be used basically to operate and maintain King County parks, regional trails, open space acquisitions, provide money for repair and renovation and recreation areas. And one that concerns Mercer Island directly is that there's an increase from $29 million to $60 million over this six-year period of pass-through money through to cities. And at the PIC meeting that I attended, Deanna Dawson, who is the executive director of the SCA, she asked the PIC members to go back to the council, to their respective councils, and to provide comments, if the council wants to, by March 20, which is the date of the next SCA board meeting.
Tomorrow?
I guess. Yeah. And so the idea is that whatever comments we have, viewpoints that we want to share, would be shared with the SCA representatives on the King County Regional Policy Committee. And the Regional Policy Committee will also make a recommendation to the King County Council regarding the levy. So some of the issues that were discussed at the PIC meeting that pertain to cities, and frankly, all the cities that were at the meeting, and Councilmember Wyker and Mayor Bertling were also at this meeting. They, everybody seemed to speak... They were excited about the idea that there's more money that's going to be passed through to the cities. But there were some questions that were raised. And so here are the questions that, again, PIC members are asked to at least, hopefully, give me guidance so I can share Mercer Island Council's viewpoints, okay? So I don't know, hopefully, some of you have had a chance to look at the materials that were emailed to you from the PIC packet. But in that PIC packet, there's a new allocation formula that results in more money being allocated to cities. And so, and so for instance, during this current levy, Mercer Island received something like a little bit under $600,000 over the course of six years. Under the new allocation formula, Mercer Island would receive $1.4 million. The problem that was pointed out by Toby Nixon, who's a council member of the city of Kirkland, is that this formula sounds great and everybody's excited about it, but it's not part of the ordinance. Okay, so the question that a lot of cities were asking is that, should we encourage the King County Council to incorporate this new allocation formula in the ordinance? So that's one question. The other question that was raised, or comment that was made, is that the cities did not want King County to impose any kinds of restrictions on the use of the monies that might be passed through to the cities. I don't think there has been any indication that the county would do that, but the cities just wanted to make it clear. And I think Jess would probably agree with that, that everybody sort of wants the monies to be unconditioned. And then the last comment, and I had a chance to talk a little bit with the mayor, is that there's also a list in the materials of these projects that are, that would be funded by the levy proceeds. And again, the way that it was presented, it looked like these were set in stone. In reality, these are only proposed projects. And so there may be some flexibility in proposing to the council, to the King County Council, that they consider other projects. So those are sort of the ask, the general ask that the PIC is, wants to find out where Mercer Island stands. And then they'll basically share these comments with, again, the SCA representatives. So I'm sorry, rushed right through that, and I don't know if that's clear, but maybe if you want to just take them one at a time, and Jess, if you have any opinion. The first one's, again, the first one, just so I have some order here, is whether or not this formula that ends up allocating monies as illustrated actually gets incorporated into the ordinance.
And it's a renewal and an increase, right? I can't remember how much more they're asking for. So there's more coming back to the cities, but there's more being paid into the system.
This is the list of basically funding categories, and I tried to note the increases from the previous levy. Almost, actually, everything is going up.
Do you have the rate increase handy in that slide deck?
I don't.
The rate increase, it's in the materials that were sent out, but the current levy rate in 2019 is a little bit under 13 cents per thousand of assessed value, okay? Under the proposed levy, the levy rate in 2020 will be a little bit under 17 cents. So if I did my math right, $1.2 million home, the levy would be, the levy amount would be $201.84, or roughly a little bit under $50 increase from 2019. But again, everything goes up, but there is a lot more money being raised and it's being spread. Everything there in the other slide indicated an increase.
So what you need from council is not whether or not we support this levy, but our feedback on the suggested inclusions.
Of the allocation of formula.
Of the allocation of formula. And then...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Potentially, I would like to see us have conversations about potentially getting some Aubrey Davis Trail recognition on this list of regional trails projects.
That'd be the third question.
Yeah, okay, so I don't know what that means, I don't know how we do it, but it seems to me that, you know, we spend a lot of time supporting a lot of corridors, trail corridors on the east side, and getting a little help on the east-west link through Mountains to Sound. Aubrey Davis would be great.
Yeah, I see that it is listed on the project list, but it's unfortunately, it's the yellow dotted line, which is additional projects not funded.
Plus, plus it is proposed. And the concern is, the way it sort of is being rolled out, it looks like these are all final. And so if there is flexibility, this is the time now to sort of, you know, advocate for your project.
Just to put an asterisk on that, too, this is another very important reason to finish the master plan this year, once we've identified, you know, the projects clearly for Aubrey Davis. Seeking funding will be just a little bit easier. Right now, we, you know, we've been asked, what is the project? And I can only generally answer what I think they might be. So footnote for you to consider.
Well, I mean, going to question number one, which is, should the ordinance memorialize the increased level of pass-through to the cities? Yeah, absolutely should. You've got no teeth otherwise, right?
It seems like it's a two-way street on that one, too, right? So if you look at the, the question that I have is if you look at the return of dollars to Mercer Island versus our expenditures, so we have $15 million going out, we receive $1.4 million coming back, is that because there's a lack of projects that we can attribute dollars to? Or is it, because if I look across all of King County and we're getting 10% of our spend, there must be some place in King County where they're getting 110% of their spend, or something like that.
So one thing to note, this is very important, is that King County Parks is funded solely through this levy. They no longer are funded through the county's general fund. So that, the very top of the list is $277 million for King County Parks Maintenance and Operations. So that, you know, a large chunk of this levy just goes to operate the King County Park system. And then, yes, you saw the scatter shot of all the projects that are sort of around Mercer Island, none of them coming back this year directly to us. Although we did some research, it doesn't look like what is known as the I-90 Trail has ever received funding from the King County levy. I need to confirm that.
I went through the same thing, and I looked at the ROI on the increase, because before this was proposed, is do we do a renewal levy or an enhancement levy? What I liked about the enhancement was the additional open space acquisition. I didn't like about it is it was increasing the delta of outflow versus inflow to the point where it was, I mean, it's diminishing. I wish they wouldn't do it. I wish they would just have a semi-enhanced levy where they go do the open space acquisition and forget this kickback. But I get what it is. It's an incentive to cities. I did look at projects, and I didn't find a single project funded by the levy on Mercer Island. And the nature of it is, we don't have any King County parks on Mercer Island. But to Debbie's point, if we could have a Mountain to Sound project in the project list, that would go a long way. So I'm on the fence on this. To me, it feels like the KCLS conversation, you know, the community's got strong thoughts about, you know, supporting a system that the community, the broader community relies on and that the local community benefits from. But this additional 30 going to 60 million, to me, it seems nonsensical.
And keep in mind, at this point, the levy's not even on the ballot yet, right? The King County Council's deliberating now. This is our opportunity to influence.
That's my feedback that I would take is, you know, I appreciate the increased incentive to support the levy. But to me, I just think stick to the mission.
Yeah, I agree with that. And what's the...
Well, yeah, because, I mean, what we, city residents would be paying $15 million in. And granted, get benefits from regional parks, but...
That's why I support a semi-enhanced version of it, where you go out and do the open space acquisitions, the regional trail enhancements. Those are all great, and I use all those things. I just don't need to pay more to get a little bit more back.
Well, you know, if I...
If I could for just a moment, I haven't followed the Cisco, but I know there's been talk about this at SCA Board, and I honestly just haven't fully dug into it. But a lot of what's trying, what they're attempting to do here is have the funds to acquire lands that will not be available in the future. And those are lands not within cities typically, but within the county. And, that's right. And, yeah, I mean, so if you don't get them now, you won't get them at all. Or in the, in the future, you would pay considerably more for them. And personally, I get that we're putting a lot more money into this than is coming back to our community directly. But I do think that we all benefit from having set-asides of more lands that enlarge the county park system, or, you know, the conserved lands within the county. And so I'm less of a mind to say, because it's not coming back to my community, I'm not supportive of it.
Let me clarify that. There's two parts of it coming back. Either comes back in a grant for some actual levy work on Mercer Island, which has never happened. But that's fine, because we don't have any King County parks. And then there's this return to the local government, a portion, a very small portion of this $60 million that is part of this larger levy, which is an incentive to the cities. That was 30 million, so it's doubling incentive to the cities. And we're, that's built into that rate from 15 to 17 cents, or 13 to 17 cents. When I say I support an enhanced levy or semi-enhanced levy, just don't do that. Don't increase the return to the city portion by double. Keep it at 30, that's fine. But go do the land acquisition, go do that.
Don't use the kickback as incentive to get people behind you, which is, that's what it ends up being.
But I will say, if you're at, I mean, parks projects cost money, and we have needs here. And if that's the best source for us to get some of our local parks projects done, I appreciate the kickback.
It's interesting, some of you saw the earlier versions of the levy this past fall, and everything went up except the city kickback. And so the cities collectively said, nah, we're not real happy right now. We are your urban parks and recreation providers, and we need more coming back in city pass-through. So that happened, but everything else went up at the same time. So it's been an interesting conversation over the last six months. But the cities did lobby hard to increase that funding.
I think there's a component here where, you know, if you want to be just purely calculating about it, Mercer Island has the potential to receive revenue. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the kickback, because it's got some connotations, but the return to cities...
City pass-through.
City pass-through, thank you. And the other one being the extent to which we can attach it to Aubrey Davis, which would be the only, if I can, I mean, I'm just, we don't have any other regional parks. So it would be Aubrey Davis slash Mountains to Sound. So that would be the project, you know, or the park that would land us on this allocation list. So there'd be two pieces there for us to pursue. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
So I guess, you know, like Benson, I'd like to get a little clarity so that when I'm actually in the SCA Board meeting, I can, I can say where we are landing. I'm on page two of what Jesse's handed out. Down at the bottom, overall funding highlights. What I, am I right to say that, Saleem, what you're suggesting is that you're supportive of the rest of it, but would prefer to not see the 60 million city pass-through? You'd prefer to see that stick at the 29 that's there?
Yeah, and the addition of, I guess we're not gonna call it Aubrey Davis, we can call it Mountain to Sound, right? Which includes Aubrey Davis to the project list.
To be clear, Mountains to Sound runs all the way to Ellensburg, so let's focus on the Aubrey Davis language.
The Aubrey Davis portion of Mountains to Sound. And I would, I mean, I mean, and, you know, maybe, maybe I'm going too far down this path, no pun intended, actually. We have, in terms of the east-side transportation partners, when we wrote the legislative priorities a couple of years ago, we were very specific about calling out A, bike ped, and B, regional projects. And Mountains to Sound is in there along with a significant number of these. So hopefully, I guess, a little bit of a conversation with her, point to Bruce, when you go into that board meeting, there has been regional support for building out the Mountains to Sound east-west element within the Central Puget Sound.
Sorry, like, get focused on the Aubrey Davis Park piece.
Yeah, again, I don't think we're being, well, we could, if we want, I suppose, take a position on the King County Park levy itself. But again, the specific ask that we were, that the PIC representatives were charged to do, I mean, are pretty well, very specific. And the point is that they're just trying to get an idea of the cities, if there's some sort of collective will or consensus as far as the supporters, the issues that they want to press in changes to the King County ordinance. So we're sort of, I mean, I don't know exactly where this is all going. I mean, again, there's three specific...
So has the ordinance been, where are they?
It's proposed in a proposed form.
It's proposed form.
It's before the King County Council, and that's why the time is now to suggest changes if we want. And the SCA, of course, is trying to do that collectively, you know? And so they're just trying to get an idea of what the individual cities want to do.
And one thing I took from that meeting was, it's whether you are for or against it, it's important to get the facts out. So whatever this city can do to be clear about what the rates are and where the projects go, the voters will decide ultimately. So what we can do is just help get the facts out and get the word out, especially if they're gonna run it in August, right? When, when the ballots, everyone's on vacation, right? So the timeline's short, the issues are sort of complicated, the projects are specific and general. But as much as we can be helpful with getting the facts out to voters and getting them to vote, would be...
Benson, what do you need from us to wrestle this to the ground tonight?
Well, the question is, on this allocate, this new allocation formula that does result in Mercer Island getting, and all other cities in general, getting more money. They were trying to get the smaller cities more money, and that includes us. The question is, do we want the ordinance to incorporate that allocation formula? Because right now, it doesn't. It's not part of the ordinance. So there's no assurance that the ordinance will actually result in the allocation that's being presented. So that's, that's the first question. So the question is, do we, are we in favor of incorporating the allocation formula in the ordinance? We can give thumbs up, and we simply, I mean, ultimately, it's the King County Council that's gonna decide that.
Right. So, Saleem, I'm curious, would you, would you want that formula in there such that there would then be the discretion?
Well, you'd be crazy not to, but it feels like you're getting pulled over the cop and we're saying, you know, the difference between give me a ticket or don't give me a ticket, right? I mean, it's, of course, we want the allocation formula in there if they're gonna go ahead and do it. I don't think we're gonna win any, you know, majority by saying, don't make it 60 and keep it 30. But that's just where I land. So I'd say put the, put the formula in there. Because then there's assurance, you know, we need to be able to plan from budget perspective. And if it's not in there, we can't really plan for it. If it is, we can.
Okay, I'm gonna say that.
Okay, that's fine.
The second question, hopefully, is not one that's gonna generate much question here, or anything. I talked to Jesse about this. The question is, do we tell the King County Council no restrictions? When the city gets a pass-through, it's unconditioned?
Which is consistent with the current levy. The first levy was restricted. They, that was two times ago, so, yes.
Okay, so that's a yes, I mean, that's like, yeah, okay. And then the last one is, the one that, to the mayor's point, is, right now, the list of projects, even though it looks like it's set in stone, they're not, apparently. And so this is the time now to at least put your plug in. So does the city of Mercer Island want to...
Do you want to plug in on Aubrey Davis, Mountains to Sound?
Why would you not? Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, then that's it. Now, the question is, how do you communicate this? The staff can do it, I suppose. Comments have to get in by the 20...
Is there a tomorrow?
Yeah.
I think it's a letter.
It's a letter.
Right, I think we'd probably want to prepare a letter to King County that we would like them to consider the Mountain to Sounds. Well, the Aubrey Davis, but, you know, the, that funding. I'm assuming you're talking about trail funding? Are we talking about...
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, because I saw the trail projects highlighted. Okay.
And I think each of us then goes and does our own advocacy. So for example, Bruce will be in the board meeting, I'm sure I'll be seeing, I'll see Claudia at GNPC next week. And everybody's out and about, you know?
So you're, these other corridors are a little bit bigger. I mean, I guess I feel, I would want us to at least really decide that we want to be as narrowly focused as it's the Mountains to Sound, but only the part of it that's on Mercer Island. Which does feel a little parochial in its, in its scope, and a little less likely to have anybody else say that they are supportive of that. We can do it, I just think others are gonna give us a bronze cheer around that, so...
The corridor, the Mountains to Sound, yeah.
The corridor serves the region, but if we say we only care about the Aubrey Davis portion of the corridor, then we're not saying the corridor.
You can say that, but then you can highlight, you know, you know...
Well, I think you highlight projects underway. I'm sorry, Dave.
The only way we're gonna spend grant money is on a project on Mercer Island anyway.
But don't, isn't there, is there any risk that you say Mountains to Sound, and they go, great, we're prioritizing the Lake Sammamish section of funding? Or is there no risk because you're gonna get your million and a half dollars unrestricted and spend...
But that's over six years.
But we want the million and a half unrestricted, and we want the grants.
Mayor, the King County staff will be here on April 2nd. I mean, I see a category here for capital improvements to existing regional trails. That's about 18 million. Like, would it be in there? Would it be, I mean, I think there are things you really need to ask them.
Absolutely. And, you know, the other thing, as they're considering going to the ballot, they have to have a list of projects so that the voters kind of have a general theme. However, we know from past experience, some of those projects do change. Permitting gets delayed, a whole number of things have happened. So, yeah, April 2nd, we should really dive into the Aubrey Davis conversation.
And I, and I think I would emphasize, it doesn't need to be presented nor perceived as parochial. Because the point is, is this, you know, as I said, it is regional. We have a King County sewer project, and we have a master plan that will be complete by the end of this year. With, you know, I would suspect that there's not super, well, in some cases, there are probably very super detailed plans, master plans here, but probably not in every instance, so... And even if you don't get it the first time, at least hopefully you're teeing yourself up to get it the next time, so...
We could always do expedited permit processing for them, so...
Okay, council, anything else? All right, so if we average 8:30 and 10:30, we're still at 9:30 for the last two.